Just FYI, my internet seems to be going and out. Every time it does, it mutes me.
That's helpful.
Netflix hour.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's 6 o'clock. Do we want to get started? Get back into it?
We have quite the agenda. Let's go.
Okay. All right. So FYI to the the public who has arrived following our executive session, we've already called the meeting to order and had a short executive session. And wait with me here. Joys of Passwords comes up again. Okay, so we've already started the meeting, had the roll call. We are now at the point where we have an opportunity for staff and or council members to have additions or deletions to the agenda. Anybody have additions or deletions, staff or otherwise?
I don't.
No. Mayor, I do. This is Preston.
Okay.
So I would ask that council add the amended IGA related to distribution of CARES Act funds. You all should have received an email from me the other day about Connie had found a mathematical error in the IGA that all the governing bodies had already approved. And so that IGA was amended and subsequently uploaded to the opt-in form on DOLA's grants portal. So now we're circling around with amended IGA with the correct figures for council ratification. So.
Right. That will be should we make that a new item 26 under Policy Matters?
That'd be great.
Okay. Remind me when we get there, seeing as long as this agenda is. Anything else? Sounds like not. All right. So that brings us to adoption of the consent calendar. Is there anything on there that any of you would like to pull off and discuss separately? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
A move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded, and we will need to have a roll call vote, please.
Counselors Cheek?
She's muted.
Okay, is she waving him? Aye. Grambley?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Meyer?
Terry's muted too.
Aye.
There we go.
Tyler?
Aye.
We are per Tim Johnson.
Hi.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to public comments. Establish time on the agenda to address council about anything that's not otherwise on the agenda. Does anybody want to raise their hand to address us about some other issue? A second. I don't see anybody. All right, seeing none, I'll move right along since we have a long agenda. Next is public requests and presentations. The first up is item number eight, Ridgeway Area Chamber of Commerce Presentation on Activities and Financial Status. Hillary Lickel. Welcome, Hillary.
Hi, everybody. Been quite some time since I was last presenting, and a lot has changed. And I will try and be concise. It sounds like there's a long agenda, but a lot has happened in the past few months. So there's definitely some stuff to share. I think Preston was maybe going to share his screen with the board.
Yeah, I'll bring it up right now. Hang on, Hillary. Can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start on page two, which is COVID-19 impacts and the chamber response. As most of you know, a majority of our annual budget comes from lodging tax funds. On March 20th, when the county enacted the countywide ban on lodging and short-term rentals, we met as a board and made some pretty drastic budget cuts, knowing that we were going to lose quite a bit of our funds in the springtime with not really knowing what to expect for the rest of the year. So some of the big cuts that we made and some big shifts that we made were putting some projects like the website upgrades on hold, the visitor center temporary signage project, which was part of the master plan that was passed last year. And then, of course, we decided to close the visitor center for the remainder of 2020, which I'll share some details later on in that. We cut it staff time and then real- reallocated that to supporting the town. And we worked really closely with Preston and John and Deidre throughout the past few months to make sure we were able to disseminate information and resources to our local business community and the community at large. So we had a couple webpages that we kept updated, as well as sending out email notifications to the business community when that was needed. Go ahead and keep going. So what one thing that we did decide, and this was a conversation with town, was that during this time we were not doing any active marketing of Ridgeway as a travel destination. We did resume that in the beginning of June, which was a conversation with Preston, John, and Deidre. But we're doing it in a very truncated way and ensuring that we're sharing all the details of COVID-19 best practices throughout that. As far as staffing is concerned, we haven't had any big shifts, but we, of course, have cut down time, and we will continue to do that until we have a really clear picture on what to expect as far as summer lot funds are concerned. We're being really conservative right now because we're just not sure what those funds look like, because we don't receive reports on that right away. So right now, we're aware of what May was, but we're not sure what June looks like. We do, for the first time in, I think, a couple years, have a full board of directors. As of April 2020, we have two new board members, Ash Perkins of Alpine Bank and Adam Dubruff of Ridgeway Lodging Suites. So it's nice to have that support, the organization, the good board. And we've been meeting virtually since March. Some work that has continued, and we started this back in the beginning of the year, was the 2020 Colorado Tourism Office grant that we have to promote off-peak season. And we spent a majority of those funds in the winter, and we do have some remaining. And those will be used up over the fall to then be marketing winter 2020, 2021. And that partnership was with the URA Tourism Office, which we're all aware that that no longer exists, and the City of URA has taken over that work. So we are working with them, however, not quite sure how that's going to look in the future, but are hopeful that they will continue to collaborate. You can keep going, I think, to the next page. Other work that's continued, because it is grant-funded, is the Colorado Creative Corridor, which is a partnership with the Town of Ridgeway. And one of the deliverables for this year with the grant funding is a marketing video that will feature the Ridgeway area and local creative businesses. The goal is to have this filmed in September and then ready for distribution by the wintertime. One of our big projects before COVID-19 was to put a lot of time and energy in website updates and upgrades. We're still continuing to do that in smaller projects, but we're going to put a lot of the work on hold until the fall, when we know a little bit more about what our budget looks like and see what summer lot funds bring to us. But one new partnership that we have started, and both Preston and John have been on these meeting calls as well, is collaboration between Montrose and URA, and doing some marketing campaigns with them to promote all three communities. And one thing that we've been very clear, and URA and Montrose are on board as well, is that any marketing that we do sets visitor expectations for COVID-19 best practices. And keep going. So the visitor guide for the past, I believe, almost four years now, has been a partnership with the URA Tourism Office. We're hoping this continues with the City of URA, but we haven't had a solid answer yet. So we'll kind of wait and see what comes of that, but I'm really confident that we'll they'll be a partner again for the 2021 visitor guide. Right now, the golf tournament is most likely not going to occur due to budget cuts and just the challenges of putting on events right now. But that decision will be made at the board meeting next Monday. Some of the work that we have been able to do, as far as visitor centers concerned, hopefully this will be work that will benefit other areas as well. But we created four new marketing themes to help promote all of our businesses in Ridgeway. We have two new signs up at the visitor center that are visible from the outside. So if people do stop by the center, that they can find out information without having to have a staff member there and really push and promote folks to go downtown and explore our different assets. So if you scroll up just a little bit more, Preston, you can see those four new themes, which is accommodations, travel services, professional services, and shopping. The idea is that these new icons can also be used across our digital assets as well. So that brings us to, I think it's the last topic, which is the visitor center. So we decided on May 18th in the board meeting to close the visitor center for the remainder of 2020. We are 100% reliant on volunteers to staff the visitor center, and that age demographic is typically 65-plus. And a majority of those folks were not comfortable or willing to work in the visitor center with the COVID-19 pandemic. We also received some guidelines from the Colorado Tourism Office as far as expectations for creating a space that was safe and minimized risk. And what was being recommended is something that we weren't financially able to do without having staff that were in a paid position. It was a really tough decision, but we decided to close the visitor center for the remainder of 2020 and focus some of our funding to making the outside space be something that people can still stop by and get information. So we have those two new signs that are now up outside. And through the Town of Ridgeway, they had a Main Street mini grant. And that funding was used to put a visitor guide dispenser just to the left of the signage. And then we had another dispenser to put some other materials in as well. And then through the town, they also put in some new picnic tables and gravelled the area. So folks can still stop by and get the information they need and hang out if they choose to do so. And so those are the signs that are hanging up. We have a landing page on ridgwaycolorado.com that then helps get them to those different marketing themes and finding out more information. And I think that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Hillary. Great report, as always. We certainly all recognize the challenges we're all under, and that particular, in this case, the Ridgeway Area Chamber of Commerce is faced in trying to navigate this crazy time we're in. And absolutely totally support the closing of the visitor center with, seems to me like the majority of the volunteers are in their 70s and 80s. So certainly vulnerable population, and it didn't make any sense for them to put themselves at risk like that. So I think we've made a good change in that. And I'm pretty, pretty happy with the report. Anybody have any questions for Hillary?
No questions.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity.
Appreciate the report. Hang in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Hillary.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Okay.
All right, that takes us to item number nine, update on town's applications submitted to the International Dark Sky Association for Dark Sky Community Designation.
See, Don, Don's here. Let's try to unmute him and see if he can actually give a presentation. Don, can you hear us? Hey, Don, can you hear us?
I could hear her, yes.
Hey, you're on. We can hear you, Don.
I am waiting for Val Schwartz. He's the person to be making the presentation.
See if Val's on.
Unless he's on the phones, I don't see him.
He sent out an email today to the dark sky folks saying that he expected to be speaking at 6:15, so he should be here in a minute.
All right. Well, what do we think? Should we?
We go to the next public information item back?
Item number 10 and come back to item number nine. Item number 10 is a request for council to reconsider requirement placed on approval of liquor license for the patio at Stepp's Tavern pertaining to music ending at 9:00 PM and closing by 9:30 PM. Dan Easton is on this item. Pam, do we need any introduction on this, or?
Other than, I just would note that in the packet, I placed the minutes where the council placed that requirement. And you did receive two letters that were late adds to your packet regarding that request.
Okay. Val, since you weren't here when we got to your item, we're taking the next item first, and we'll come back to you in a minute. Dan, are you? Yeah, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, it was just basically, I was under the impression that it was a probationary kind of cut-off, like a timing, to see if there was, you know, noise or whatever was feared coming from the patio itself too late. So I guess I'm just asking that there not really be a restriction on it as far as if I wanted to have maybe patrons here at 10:00 and then send them home, or 9:30 without shoving everybody out the door so fast, especially in these hot summer months when it finally cools off.
Okay. Does anybody on council have questions or comments on this?
One thing that occurs to me when we did this initially, you had told us you didn't want to run two bars. I don't know if we can temporarily approve a change, because originally in this discussion was you had said, "I don't want to have people here later because I have steps, and I would rather people just go there." And understanding that right now, that may or may not be an option based on the state or also on people's comfort levels. You know, you had said that's not something you wanted to do, but maybe we could look at a temporary change to that requirement, given that things are weird right now. That was my thought when I read through stuff.
Yes, I mean, I guess I'm just throwing this out with no value on it, but there's several letters from the public who are asking that we not approve extended hours on the patio.
But yeah. And I do know, though, that Dan had raised the question of like, what is eatery allowed to do? But then the question is, do you operate more as a bar? You know, raising the question of, are we individually micromanaging individual businesses? I don't know.
I was going to throw out that I believe, I believe the Sky Bar, at least at one time, committed to the music ending by 9:00. I think I think it's totally reasonable for outdoor venues that might have music on a summer night to not have the music go past 9:00 o'clock. I think there are a lot of people that like their peace and quiet. Ridgeway's a peaceful, quiet little town, and while they're, they'll be fine with music up to an hour like 9:00, I think beyond that, it's well within the neighboring residential neighborhoods' expectations to keep it to 9:00. Now, that's a separate question as to whether we could allow them to stay open past 9:00, but not with the music stopping at 9:00. So I guess we could discuss that.
Yeah. I'm actually more, I'm more interested in just having customers out here. And we don't make a ton of noise anyway. So, and I haven't had much live music. And if I did, it would be pretty tame. They're really tame ass here, out here. So it's more, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think, kind of given the fact that you're a liquor license holder, that we have a whole separate issue to deal with in terms of noise restrictions. I would be most comfortable, and I don't know what the rest of council thinks, with some sort of temporary change or extension, given that you can't ask your patrons to move to steps in the way you would normally. And so, you know, if you're not having music and you just want an hours extension, I think I would consider a temporary, like, for the remainder of this summer, you're being a good neighbor, and we can go from there. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I think we'd consider it.
I'd totally be amenable to that. I'm also curious, remember, to the public, I mean, I know we have letters on record, but I'm also just curious kind of what other people or folks in the community are thinking, they are thinking about that.
Yep. I'll take public comment in a minute. First off, to see if anybody else from council has any comments. I mean, I'd be open, based on what Beth just said, I'd be open to, say, even what, maybe like a 90-day, 60-day, or 90-day temporary extension to serve until 10:00, for example, and have that be contingent on how it goes and impacts on the neighbors. But what's everybody else thinking?
I'd be in support of till 10:00, 90 days, till about 10:00 o'clock. Maybe keeping music even in fair with the rules that we have set at Sky Bar and Eatery, but allowing some extra time for patrons at the patio would be nice, especially in the summer. I'd be on board with that.
Yeah, I think I would as well.
All right, let me open it up. Anybody in the audience want to weigh in?
I would just, I would just say that 10:00 sounds good, and I appreciate the input on that. I would like to hear from some community members as well, if they're available, I guess.
Okay, I see Josie's got her hand up. Can we unmute her? Go ahead, Josie.
Yeah, hey, I'm here. I guess I'd just like to say that I know the comment was made that there's been a couple letters of from community members who are not in support of this, but I think letter writing is not necessarily indicative of the overall support from the community of having somewhere where we can have an outdoor drink or music experience or whatever until 10:00 o'clock. So I would hope the council wouldn't make a decision just based on a couple of letters that were written, because I think there's also a lot of support the other way. I don't know if anyone in the council has been to the patio before, but it is a very chill outdoor environment where people can socially distance and have a chat with their neighbors. So I would hope that there'd be support in favor of this.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't, I can I have Josie's boss name, please?
Josie Scoville.
Thank you.
Normal music out, or do you want this over?
Somebody, Dan, we're hearing background noise out of here. Thank you. Let's see, I think the next hand that was raised was Tammy.
Hey, guys, I'm speaking out. This is Tammy Tuttle, and I'm speaking out in support of of what Steps offers. As you guys may or may not know, I'm not very social, except within the walls of my own business. But I have gone to Steps several times, and I think Dan is an amazing part of our community. What he offers is awesome. It does allow us to still interact and communicate. Most of us, as bars and restaurants, shut down by 9:00, so this gives a great place actually for our staff to go and kind of find some calm. And I think that motorcycles and Jake brakes have been far noisier than Dan has ever been.
There's something to be said for that. Let's see, Jake Nice.
Hello.
Hi, Jake.
Yeah, I wanted to just voice support in allowing Steps to stay open a little longer in response to some of the other letters. It is right on Main Street, and as Tammy said, we get a lot of noise from Jake brakes and trucks and stuff right there. And I think it's a completely reasonable compromise to stop music at 9:00, but allow a little extra time at the end of the evening to finish up and clear out, especially considering it's an outside space. And people might not have another option otherwise. So it's a good community builder, in my opinion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Paulie, we'll get to you in a second. Tom McKinney. Can you unmute him possibly? There we go. You're unmuted, Tom.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a close neighbor, and I totally support the success of that business. And I wouldn't be object, I would not object in any way to patrons staying longer as long as the noise level is kept down. I think that the steps outside has, has the ability, because there's a bartender or someone right there at, you know, that can monitor the noise. It's not like the outdoors of the steps where, you know, there can be 20 decibels out there, and they have no idea because they're one floor below and probably have three walls between them. So I would not object to that as long as the volume is kept reasonable.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Next up, Paul's iPhone. Is that Paul Choate?
Okay, I'm here.
Is that Paul Choate?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. I'd also like to say my opinion, as a former bar owner in this town also. I think that, you know, instead of pinpointing businesses out, when you talk about Eatery or Sky Bar or whatever else, why not adopt a universal noise ordinance rule? You know, I think the police department needs decibel meters. I think it needs to be fair all the way around. It is zoned a business district. And I think pinpointing different businesses and each one acting to a different standard is a little unfair in this, especially in the current times. And you also have to look at, you know, with these businesses, they're an integral part of the community. And if whatever happens out on the sidewalk or when everybody walks out into a public space is not the business owner's responsibility, in my opinion. Of course, everybody's responsible and tries to, you know, take care of anything they can on that end. But I just, you know, it's the state of the hospitality and restaurant industry in this town right now is dwindling. And I think, I think it definitely needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Paul. And I think maybe you misunderstood my comments. I was trying to point out that we should have, and in a way, we do have, whether it's informal or not, a unified policy on ending 9:00. That's in my understanding, whether it's formal or not. I definitely appreciate your comment, trying to support the hospitality industry in this incredibly challenging time. So let's see, next up, we have someone just labeled Orbis.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, is this Christie?
No, this
Uh, no, this is Jessie.
Jessie, okay, hi Jessie, sorry.
That's all right. So I just wanted to say that I support him and I think that in order for a community to truly be supportive, then we need to come together and give these businesses every opportunity to survive what we're going through and what's happening and stop micromanaging our businesses and give us a chance to actually make back what the last three months have taken from us. So I support what he wants and I think you guys need to let him do it.
Great, thanks, Jessie. And I apologize for mixing you up with Christie. Pardon me?
Josie's last name?
Orvis.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I mean, I think if you look back at what the town council has done over the last three months, we've tried to do everything we can to support the business community. That said, we always have to take everything about what we do and take everyone's impacts into account. I mean, I have 100,000% agreement with trying to support our business community in these times because they're crazy, crazy bad potentially. And at the same time, you know, we still have to have some respect for neighboring residents. But I'm, I'm hearing some pretty solid consensus here in that we could probably make our suggestion work. I see a iPhone listed without a name.
I don't think iPhone has any audio capability.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like you don't. Whoever's on the iPhone with their hand raised will need to enable your microphone before we can hear you. I'll move that, I'll move to Polly Enix.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead, Polly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say that as a musician in town here, I completely support shutting down music earlier the patio a few minutes later. Dan is a good member of our community and also I completely concur that the patio is a good thing for our town and probably going to be at large.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The iPhone owner, are you working to get your microphone turned on? Because otherwise we can't hear you, I'm afraid. Dan, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, John. I, I just had a question real quick. I know somebody had said that there were some written emails sent in some places. But if I'm not mistaken, there's multiple, multiple written emails on the contrary. I just wanted to ask if those were received.
Yeah, we'll make sure that whether we fully read them into the record or we, I think we probably need to read them into the record. We got at least two emails on both sides, but appreciate you bringing that up. And Preston or Pam, I think at some point we should probably at least summarize those or read them into the record. In the meantime, I see Autumn Bailey with her hand up. And I would just say, if you've got a comment that just echoes what's been said before, try and keep it short. We've got a long meeting, but go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. No, I would just like to say that as a person who lives almost directly behind this business, I have never had an issue with noise from this business. I literally live across the alleyway, almost directly behind patio. I support patio, I support the business owner. I think he's a wonderful, upstanding community member. And I think as someone who has their house buttoned up almost directly against the back of this business, I can say that I personally have not had a noise issue from this business at any time. That would be disconcerting for me or my young family.
Okay, thanks, Autumn.
Thank you.
And I, I will say, I think this, the Steps patio issue and the Steps bar issues are night and day. They're totally different. So we recognize that. Looks like the iPhone owner got his or her audio figured out. So can we unmute that phone and then whoever's on that phone, please identify yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, you're Furkins.
Oh, hi, sorry.
I just, hey, how's it going? I just wanted to jump on. It seems like everybody that is in support of Steps and I've pretty much said exactly what news would be said. I mean, Dan's a great guy and what he's done for this community is great and he's, this patio is, I mean, just a great spot to just come for these patrons to spend their evenings, you know, after these long years of working all year long here and being able to come. And Dan's providing us of an escape place a little bit, you know, which is awesome. And that's all I really wanted to say because it seems like everybody else has kind of covered pretty much everything that I agree with, so.
Great. Thank you for your comment. And Pam, if you didn't catch that, that was Sawyer Furkins.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Oh, good. So I think I'm hearing pretty strong consensus. Preston, do we need to read those emails into the record?
I'll defer to Bo on that one. I don't know that that.
It's not a public, it's not a public hearing per se. So, I mean, I think what we could do is just itemize that there were, I believe there were two neighbors who wrote saying they were concerned about us allowing this. And then there were two, actually, the other two I remember seeing were about the Steps indoor bar, I believe. Maybe you guys.
So we received, so we received a letter from, just yes, or Monday, from Paulette Crabbe, one from Martha McKinney, and.
The other ones were for the Steps renewal. So Paulette Crabbe and Martha McKinney's letter addressed both, both requests. And the other two letters we received are just for the Steps Tavern. So it's a different item.
Gotcha.
And those letters were submitted from Larry Mallard and Mitzi Mallard.
Great, thank you. Oh, is that?
I believe that's completely sufficient with respect to getting that information on the record.
Great, thank you. All right, so council, it seemed like there was consensus with my suggestion that we give them a 90-day sort of probationary period of being able to stay open till 10, but having music end at night. Is that right?
Yeah, and just point of clarification slash question, are we doing this as a 90-day probationary period? And then that would then allow Dan to go forward next summer with that? Or are we doing this as a, in light of our current situation? Just to be clear.
Good question. Pam, is there a process limitation on how we can do this?
This is not relative to an application for liquor license. This is something that the council put on a local level onto the license. So it's not something that has to go to the state.
This is about a separate condition that we put on. So hearing that, what do you guys think? I mean, I think we do need to revisit it, make sure it's been successful, which I think it will be, based on what I've seen. And let's see, 90 days basically takes us through September. Depending on the weather, he might want to stay open another month. I don't know. So I think we should revisit it after 90 days.
I agree.
So we can, we can, I think we could probably leave it at that then. If we intend to revisit it after 90 days, we could either leave it in place or say, you know, that was a summer of COVID.
So Mayor, if I make, sorry, Beth, I didn't mean to. If I, 90 days puts us in early October, if I'm math's right, but I'm not really good at math. So I would ask that if you're going to do, you know, a trial run of 90 days, we take it through October 14th, which is the regular meeting of town council that month. Council can revisit that meeting or get a progress report, if that makes sense.
Good suggestion.
Yep, like that.
Okay, and I believe we need a motion to that effect. Actually, before that, Josie, I see you've got your hand up again. Do you have something new to add? Can we unmute Josie for a second?
Yep, sorry, gotcha. Sorry, just one procedural question. So I'm curious why it's a 90-day thing, which I appreciate, I think that's great. But I'm wondering, like, was it a 90-day for a tequila? Was it a 90-day for Eatery? Like, I know we talked about making this, you know, a town-wide ordinance or, not ordinance is the right word, but a town-wide thing. But I am curious about, like, the 90-day stipulation. Has that been a habitual thing that you've done with other business owners in the community?
I mean, I'll, I can say why I suggested that we, you know, Dan, we just said that the tavern and the patio are separate businesses and separate problems, but Dan is the license holder on both. We have had community members express concern. The part of this is, I think, council is not expecting to have a problem, but we do want to revisit it and make sure that the neighbors who expressed concern get addressed. That's kind of my thought.
I think it's, I think it's fair to the neighbors, to those who have complained with letters and about possible sound violations. I think it's, it's fair to them to, to give this a shot and review it and not just pass it blindly. It's a good neighbor.
Well, and, you know, I will say Eric and I are probably the only ones who remember, but there was, there were some neighbor complaints about the Sky Bar early on. I think whether it was their first summer or second summer, where they were going with pretty loud music past nine on occasion. And some of the Solar Ranch neighbors were upset about that, so we had to kind of revisit that. And so I don't think this is that unusual of a circumstance. And again, we certainly recognize that the value of, of what Dan's doing there and what it offers the community that need to, that want to be able to get out and, and have a cocktail on the, in the cool hours of the evening in the summer in Ridgway, so.
And I agree. I have no rejection of this. I think, I think this whole conversation as well, with some comments from Paul and Josie and some other people, it really brought an issue that we maybe need to look at is that is rather than doing this on an individual basis every time, a little bit piecemeal, maybe we need to think about codifying this a little bit down the road here. Just my thought. Just, just a little more clear cut.
Right, and now I say 90 days, let's Dan do it right now, rather than putting him on the weight for us to go through that.
Yeah, and I guess it plays a little bit, you know, not every property is the same. So to codify something that applies to any business that might want to have an outdoor patio with music and cocktails and snacks.
But you could, you could create something in the ordinance that created a, a condition, a variance or a conditional use request or something along those lines, I think. I don't know. It's nothing immediate, but it's something I think down the, down the road somewhere we need to probably look at.
Yeah, some for, for staff to take a look at.
I'm not saying this needs to be done by next meeting, by any stretch of the.
That's good. All right, so I think we have consensus. Somebody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the patio, the liquor license of the Steps patio with the contingency that with the requirements that the music stop at nine, I believe is what we agreed on and that the bar be able to stay open till 10 for 90 days.
Or until October 14th.
Or for October 14th.
And it's, just to be clear, it's not technically approving a liquor license. It's just adjusting the condition on the existing liquor license, I believe. Is that correct, Bo?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second, that.
Each to a test. All right, motion seconded, made by Russ, seconded by Kevin. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors Chief, Bramley.
Aye.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Whipper Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Great, passes unanimously. There you go. Thanks, Dan. All right. That takes us back to item number nine and Val on the update on town applications submitted to the International Dark Sky Association for Dark Sky Community Designations. I see Val is unmuted. Go ahead, Val.
Yeah, good afternoon or actually good evening, I guess. Just wanted to, to mention to everyone is that I am, I'm honored to announce that the International Dark Sky Association, their board of directors have unanimously approved designating Ridgway as a dark sky community. On behalf of, on behalf of the Colorado chapter of IDA, I would like to be the first to thank and congratulate the Mayor John Clark, all the members of town council, including many, many past members who were extremely supportive of this effort. Also town staff that contributed greatly and the members of the ROCKS Dark Sky Committee who all made this very possible. This international designation recognizes Ridgway's accomplishment not only over the last few years, but over the last couple decades in preserving the dark night skies above us, work that was originally pioneered by Howard Green and Jim Kennedy. Finally, IDA's official announcement is located on our website at darksky.org and it's live right now. And a final acknowledgement to Gary Radcliffe for donating to IDA his image of the Milky Way over Chimney Peak that showcases Ridgway's accomplishment. So thanks to everyone for, for fabulous effort. And I, I appreciate it for, for all of us that really cherish the, the dark skies above Ridgway.
Great, Val.
Thank you so much for all your work, Val.
Yeah, thank you.
Very cool. And thank you so much for mentioning Howard Green and Jim Kennedy because they, they deserve a lot of credit for starting this many, many years ago. And to everyone who's been involved in this process, our staff, you guys on the ROCK Dark Sky Committee, numerous residents and just, I mean, I think we can't overestimate the, the impact this has on Ridgway's reputation around the region and the world as a place that's joining every other international dark sky designated community as people who are really working to protect our incredible asset of our dark skies. So thanks, thanks a bunch to you, Val, and to everyone else on the committee and staff. Great work. Very exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Laura, Laura here at My Place is Cracked. We're, we're having it outside.
That's great. That photo was great. I just pulled up that website. What a great shot, too.
Yeah, it's a beautiful shot.
Yeah, it's a beautiful shot. Yeah, so thanks, thanks to Gary for donating that.
And I, all I can say is I look forward to the day that we can all get out there and, and raise a toast to the effort and to the accomplishment and do it out under the sky where we should be. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately this year we can't really get together like, or like that. But perhaps maybe next year we go, I'll kind of regroup up at top or something like that and
Yeah, right.
Have a, have a star party up there.
Right. That's so exciting. And I don't believe we need to take informal action. We've already done that. It's just great to hear the fine news and so exciting. So thanks, thanks again to everybody. And since we have a long agenda, we're going to move on. Thanks, Val.
Okay, take care.
And thanks to the other members that are here. I know I saw Dave Jones, Don Schwartz. Thank you guys particularly for, for all your hard work in, over the recent couple of years. It's great, great achievement. Thank you. All right, so that takes us to the next section of public hearings. Item number 11, we have a request for extension of River Park Ridgway Business Filing three, Outlaw P3 slash C preliminary plat. And welcome Shay.
Hi, I'm assuming you guys can hear me all right?
Yep.
Awesome. So our council members that have been on council for a little while will remember this application, but for those of you who are new, I'll go over a few details. The applicant is Ridgway Light Industrial and I believe Glenn Pauls and/or Scott are on tonight to answer any questions you may have. tonight to answer any questions you may have. They are requesting an extension for phase three of River Park. So let me. Preston, do you have this one up on your screen? Is it easy for you to share? I just realized I didn't pull it up properly.
We'll bring it up right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So River Park consisted of so far two major phases. The first phase was the industrial park that includes like the towns, super lagoons, the, the SNP facilities, and then a lot of the residences. And then there was a phase two that included additional residences, kind of on the east side of, of the first portion. Thanks, Preston. So that map right there kind of shows the area that is this phase three. So it's the area east, I'm sorry, west of the existing industrial park. And the idea for that property, you can, we, we have a lot of records of what was requested here. But the idea was that that would also be developed into light industrial properties. So Laura Street would be developed on the west side. And then you would have industrial blocks kind of lining up with those blocks on just to the east of that. So let me. I'm trying to find my notes now and I can't find. How do I get out of this full screen? Can I not? Okay. If you could scroll down Preston. Thank you. So there's a lot of history here with the River Park development. This all began, I believe, before 2001. Filing one was filed in December 2001. Filing two was filed in September 2005. A lot of it has been built out and finished. This other, this kind of one west side has just not been, been finished. If you could scroll down a little bit more Preston, this, this kind of just goes through the history of all of the, all of the property here. And let's see, the most recent thing, that's perfect. Thank you. The most recent thing that has happened is that we did a replot of black, a replat of block eight. So that's the area on the north side of the existing industrial park lots. And that was approved by town council in 2018 and it kind of helped realign, better align the alley with the rest of the roads there. It cut the alley through and that project is currently being finished. It's kind of dragged on a bit. I think we were all hoping that would finish a bit faster, but hopefully that will be closing out soon. This request has been, so preliminary plats expire every two years. So this request has been heard in front of council in 2010, 2012, 2014, 2016, 2018, and now it's back with you again. So every year the council has kind of said, hey, we, you know, figure that the criteria are met. There's been some hard economic times and we'll give you an extension. The staff analysis piece kind of offers a couple just perspectives on that. It seems like a lot of the area has kind of been built out, that there's really some demand for this now. Construction activity has really rebounded since, you know, since these extensions were first requested. However, with the global pandemic, I, I think a lot of people are nervous to put money into anything. And there's just so many unknowns right now that things get a little bit scary. There is also a minor detail that I won't go into a ton. But there, in order to construct Laura Street, there's a really funky property boundary on the southern end of that. So near Otto Street and the idea that an extension may be able to aid some conversations there to better complete Laura, North Laura Street. So as it stands right now, the approval for North Laura would, there'd be a little one way section for like a block or two. And it's a little funky, but it's, the property owner does not own that little portion that would create Laura Street. So I'm, I'm happy to go into more detail if that is helpful. But the, under the staff recommendation part, if you could just scroll down a little bit more, not that it matters a ton. You know, this, this has been a successful development. This land is zoned industrial. I'm not sure that if this wasn't, if this extension wasn't approved, that whatever is approved there eventually would be much the same. The, the kind of, I guess, character and development pattern for this area is somewhat set with the industrial park. There are also a lot of prior conditions of approval and other requirements that I believe should be part of any extension. I also kind of throwed out throughout the option of recommending this approval be for one year. Just because, you know, the whole point, I believe of our code having two year extension limitations is because we don't want to approve something and 20 years later it gets built. And it may, you know, we, we just may have different ideas for our town eventually. So it seems like it'd be really nice to get this thing kind of going and built sooner than later. Instead of doing two years approvals for many more years to come. I think another interesting point or something that might be helpful is that we have, I feel like council has provided some really clear direction on the proposal that we have kind of heard on and off about providing housing in this industrial, industrially zoned area and that that council has pretty clearly expressed housing is not desired in this area of town. And that may give the property owners some more, I guess, direction in terms of what they want to do and where they want to go with this property. So the request again, it is from the applicant is a two year extension to their preliminary plat application that was originally approved in like 2008. So a lot in there, but happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Great. So Shay, as a reminder, this is a public hearing, so we have to follow public hearing protocols, which first off will have council have an opportunity to ask staff Shay in particular, any questions you may have about, about this request. Then we'll give the applicant a chance to speak and, and add anything he feels necessary. And then we'll open it up for public comment. So council, anybody have any questions or comments for Shay?
Shay, do we have any idea how substantially the new standards for the infrastructure would affect this filing? If we ask the property owner to adopt that going forward?
That's a great question. I don't only because I had, wasn't involved in the initial approvals. And also the standards and specs, I believe Joanne is on. She might have some thoughts on that because she was actually involved in, in all of that.
Joanne, are you on?
Just in case.
I see Joanne. Yep. And you're unmuted.
And she may not be joining until later. I had text with her earlier.
She's on here and she's unmuted. Joanne, do you have any, anything to add? We can't hear you. But it does show that you're unmuted. So.
She may be away from her computer. I know she was hanging out with her dog tonight.
Okay. Well, we'll wait on that. Anybody else have questions for Shay? Questions or comments?
And just to try to answer that question, Beth, I, I don't see it being significant. I mean, the, I think a lot of the utilities and things are in, it's probably the building of Laura Street. That's the, the biggest item. And there may be just, I don't know, some different materials. My guess is, you know, the, the idea behind our standards and specs, which we're talking about later is updating to current materials and things that are just old, like we don't do, you know, lead pipes. I'm not sure if that's in there, but I, my guess is it's not huge. But just would build to, you know, kind of today's standards, but that is a guess.
Yeah. I mean, because my, my perspective is if they've had this many years of extensions, this point they should probably need to, as, as much as is reasonable, like you said, if there's utilities and that are under different, that would need to be considered. But I would want to, anything else? If we adopt new code, meet that.
Yeah, I would just throw out that, on the question of the block of, I think it's a block of Laura that is sort of problematic because I believe it's the wolves that own that parcel. The wolves have been more amenable to, to working with the town and, and or indicated a greater willingness in the last six months or a year. So I'd like to think that we might be becoming better placed to get this done. And that's always been one of the biggest obstacles.
Yes, to that point, I have a question, you know, just limiting this extension to one year at all impede those negotiations? Might they need two years for those negotiations? Does it matter?
I don't know.
So I guess, you know, my thought is, you know, we extended this several times and I think with a lot of, with a good reason. And I think this extension makes sense and that I think that light industrial land is needed and warranted in town. And given the, the current pandemic, almost want to call it the C word. I'm so tired of talking about that an economic travails that I think are going to fall out of this. I, I think a two year extension probably makes sense at this point. I think a year is just not enough. And we'd just be hearing this back again next July. Some of you would.
That was an ominous comment.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go right over that one. Any, any other questions or comments from council? I did see Glenn Pauls here a moment earlier. Glenn, do you have anything you want to add? There you go. You're unmuted.
Am I in now?
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome.
Yeah. Hey, thanks for, thanks for hearing this. Yep. Say hi to the council. No, it's, yeah, we're, we're here again, just looking at getting an extension on this because it's been, you know, we've had, we had redone the block eight subdivision. It's put together two nice commercial lots. And I have one with a contract pending. And then another one that we would have got done last year, but without getting into a whole lot of details, the contractor we had took way more time than we thought it was going to take to get this done. There's still some little cleanup deals going on there yet, but it is moving forward on block eight. And so that'll, you know, add to the end of the school, the school intersection down there. And then Ben Jackson's been working on my behalf, you know, with you guys quite a bit, I guess, on getting the, you know, just trying to clarify the housing idea, which I was really hoping would work because housing obviously is a lot easier to sell than, than commercial. But it sounds like that's kind of off the table now, from what I've been gathering from, from him. I guess, do you guys have any comment? I mean, that's, that's what you were saying. I heard earlier before I got on here.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for, for Glenn?
I mean, any, any issues with us asking you, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our specs and adding that? Because I, I feel like I'm down for two years. I would just want to be forward looking on that and the, the might go together. Is there any issue that you have with that?
No, two years would be more helpful. I mean, obviously like I've always stated when I talk to you guys that I, you know, I'm paying taxes on this and I'd love to move this thing.
Fair.
It's just, yeah, this seems like there's always something that comes up, but it, it seems like right now, even with the COVID thing, there is interest in town and, and things are moving, which has been interesting. I don't know. So it might just, you know, it's, it's hard to say where it's going to go from here, but right now it actually looks plausible. So. I know we've had a lot of time out there and then there wasn't really much happening in Ridgeway as far as the commercial side goes. And I think most everything is built out in the, in the rest of the industrial park. I think Jack Petroselli has one lot, I think, left. But yeah. And the two I just created are obviously out there.
We, we would love to see this thing move forward, Glenn. That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my goal too, is to, you know, I'd like to have something happen here because it's, it'd be better with businesses on it.
Absolutely. All right, let me, unless somebody else has comments or questions for Glenn. I will open this up to public comment. Anybody in the audience want to weigh in either with? The way this public hearing stuff works, we need you to basically make comments. You can ask questions, but they won't be answered in direct response while the public comment period is open. We'll try and get answers for you once we go back to deliberation process from either staff or the applicant. But I see Tom McKinney has his hand up. Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, I, I think this is a great project. I agree with the staff assessment of this, and I think that it ought to be extended for one year as opposed to two. Historically, we see that doesn't seem to be one problem whatsoever with extending it again. But if, if a year from now, we're in a different situation, I'd just as soon see this thing move forward. But I think it's a great project. And I commend you guys for thinking about it and for Glenn Pauls for putting it out there for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Let's see any other hands. Glenn, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Not, not really. I guess I'm, like I said, I could, you know, the two years goes by fairly quickly and we are trying, you know, along with, along with getting it done and getting it sold. Of course, I guess getting it done, yeah, it doesn't have to be sold in a two year period, I guess, but yeah, it's, yeah, I guess I don't really have a lot, a lot of really comment on it. It's, it's, you know, like I said, I'm, I'd like to get the thing moved, get it going. But at the same time, it's, it's, it's always been kind of a, it seems like the economy has always been a hard thing there.
Right.
It's looking better now and I'm hoping we're getting somewhere, but.
Okay.
I think it's been, it's been a good project and I think, I think you guys, I think you guys agreed with that. It's, it's, you know, it's nice to have the industrial park there and fits there and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
To me, it seems like the point that like you say, it's, it's almost all built out. Should indicate that there should be demand for more. Of course, everything is thrown up in the air by, by COVID, but from everything I'm hearing from local real estate people that the market doesn't seem to be impacted at all. That, of course, is mostly residential, but.
Yeah.
But anyway, we'll see. All right. Thanks for that. I will close the public hearing, seeing no more hands up. And I'll bring it back up to council for deliberation. I think I heard pretty clear consensus that there's agreement that we should grant the extension. And I think I heard at least a majority of people say they were okay with two years. Am I correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so any other comments or questions or should we go ahead and have a motion?
Well, I'll go ahead and move that we approve a two year preliminary plat extension to Ridgeway Light Industrial with all the previous conditions that have been placed on, on approval.
Second.
Tessa beat you this time, Kevin. Motion's made by Eric, seconded by Tessa. A roll call vote is necessary, please.
Councilor's chief.
Aye.
Bramley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Skyler.
Skyler. Looks like he's frozen.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
All right, well, we have a majority anyway, so hopefully Terry will come back. Okay, there we go.
There he is.
All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us on to a series of actions that were before the planning commission last week. The first is item number 12, application for replat of block 12 lots 1 through 3, address 953 Moffett Street, Zone Historic Residential, applicant and owner Ellen Hunter. Shay, you want to kick this off?
You bet. In my connection, I'm getting a kind of bad connection. So let me know if I need to stop and call in.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So this request is for a replat of three historic lots into two lots. The property is on Moffett Street, right at the intersection of South Elizabeth Street. Currently, this, these three historic lots are occupied by a single-family residential structure and some accessory structures. So last week at the planning commission meeting, the commission recommended approval of this replat to council with the conditions in the staff report and to allow for 180 days to meet the conditions of approval rather than the 90 days that the code allows for. The reasoning for that is that there are some more complicated conditions like removing the existing propane tank and retrofitting the existing house from propane to natural gas and then relocating an electrical service line for lot A. And there are a couple other conditions in this report as well that I think the applicant has expressed easy, easy to meet, but just need a little bit more time than the typical 90 days that are allowed, just because it's the middle of summer. I think contractors are hard to get a hold of and make things happen. The rest of the details are in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if helpful.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Shay. This again is a public hearing, so I will first ask if anyone on council has any questions or comments for Shay? Or staff in general. I see that Terry's still muted because of his internet issues. Tim, there we go.
So I guess I'll just throw something out really quick. I mean, this is not the first time we've subdivided three, what is three lots on a corner. I mean, that's what my house is actually. We've done that in several places in town. I think it's a really good use of build out and lots in town to build out. Took out those corner lots. It makes a lot of sense. So I don't have any objection to doing this at all.
I, I think we're going to see more of this because this is essentially what we wanted to see happen when we passed our code and land use changes recently. So I think this is totally in line with what we want to see.
Okay. Seems like I'm seeing nodding heads. Ellen, I see you're on here, but I don't see an audio icon. So it looks like maybe your audio isn't turned on. I'll give you a second to try and figure that out. I'm guessing there's probably not a whole lot you have to add. This is a pretty straightforward item, but I want to make sure I give you opportunity to speak if, if you want. In the meantime, I think what I'll do it. Who's that? Thought I heard somebody. Anyway, I will, I'll open up.
John, that was me. Ellen's.
Go ahead.
Ellen's connected on her phone, and I just unmuted her phone.
Okay. Ellen? Anything to add? Is that you at 1134, 318 1134?
Yeah, that should be her.
It just disappeared.
I just tried to merge it with her name.
Oh.
Maybe I messed it up.
No, I see it. So there we go. Now we can hear you. Welcome, Ellen. Yep, we can hear you. Go for it.
Okay. So I would say I don't have a lot to add. I appreciate the extra time because there is some extenuating circumstances. I'm hoping to actually, if everything works right, start building so that I can actually move the, the electric line at the same time rather than having to move it separately. The easement goes along the front eight feet of the new lot and the electric, because it's old school, just sort of diagonals across the new lot in a random way because it was put in a long time ago. Other than that, I already talked to Clear Networks about hooking both the new properties up to phone and internet that way rather than using central links. And I'm in process of moving the natural gas now.
Great. Sounds good. Anybody have any comments or questions for Ellen? All right, let me open it up to public comment. Anybody in the audience have comments or questions about this item? Seeing none, I think we, I think we can, let's see, I see. Peyton, are you looking to make a comment? You're muted if you are. Oh, there he goes. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing for now. Bring it back up here. I do, I do think a couple of people have said it seems like the kind of thing that we've done a lot in Ridgeway. It's, it helps with our, our stated goal and our master plan of increasing density in town so that we don't have sprawl. It's a good location for this on a cornered lot. Seems to make sense to me. So any other comments, questions from council before someone makes motion?
I
I'll move to approve Hunter replat for block 12 lots 1 through 3 for owner Ellen Hunter. Given the criteria have been met with following conditions met before the final plat can be recorded. One, the existing propane tanks should be removed. Two, electrical service line for lot A should be relocated to the easement on the proposed plat map, or the easement can be revised to encompass the existing service line. Three, phone and internet services to lot B shall be sorted out. Four, survey monuments shall be placed, monuments shall be placed. The applicant shall have 180 days to meet these conditions.
A second.
All right, motions made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Grambley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
We're for Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Great. Passes unanimously. There you go, Ellen.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
You too. You're welcome. All right, this takes us to item number 13, application for plat amendment. This is a complicated one. Location, all lots within Parkside subdivision. Addresses 795, 791, 790, 765, 760, 77, 755, 740, 730, 720, and multiple TBD North Laura and multiple TBD Marion Overlook Zone Residential applicants are Parkside Ridgeway Community Association owners Habitat for Humanity of San Juan, Cameron, Cameron L. Miller and Bertina Monares, Kimoriyama Alpine Creek Homes LLC, Roger and Susan Stewart Truck, Lil and Caitlin Loesch, Megan McGuire, Mark Pagan, Riverside Investment Partners LLC, Brittany Christina Martin, Anton R. and Debbie Potatchnik, Scott, Rob, and Norman Ira Unfug, Parkside Ridgeway Holdings LLC, Andre N. Jr. Bullock, Matthew P. Sandral, Stephen J. Hertzfeld, 425 North Laura Homestead LLC, John A. Jr., John A. Malone Jr., A. Henry Case, Bryce Lanier Jones, and Ryan Andrew Jones, and Justin R. Fagan. Phew, mouthful. Shay, you taking this away?
You bet. Thanks for that, Mayor. So this is a request for a, an amendment to the Parkside subdivision plat map. For those of you who aren't familiar, Parkside is basically the kind of west border of the River Park subdivision. So it runs in between Green Street and then kind of the lots that are in between North Laura and Kismet Street, kind of a long skinny development. And the request is actually really simple, but it's on the plat, so we have to do this plat amendment. And it's to amend note two. Currently, note two restricts driveway and construction access via Green Street and Parkside Place. Parkside Place is just this little one lot width cut through street that is very small. And it, it restricts that construction and driveway access. However, there was a lot of property built on the very first one and the only one for a while that built their garage facing Parkside Place already. So, so this request would basically allow that person, that owner, the Malones, to be able to cut their driveway and make a curb cut there to access their, their current garage. In addition, this would clean up the note to Parkside Place through this request. We noticed that the plat map, the actual drawing of the map, used a different, used Parkside Place and the language in the note said Parkside Drive. So I did, we, we can clean that up now with this, this change in the language. The planning commission last week recommended approval of this to council with the condition that any curb cut be set back the greater of 10 feet from the property line at the corner or 20 feet from the cross street there. So the new language for plat note two is listed there in the proposed motion. And the idea is that lot nine would use park, be able to use Parkside Place for driveway access, not construction access, nor would the lot just to the south of it be able to place a driveway or use that for construction access. Trying to keep the intent of the note here, but accommodate something that kind of happened somehow. And keeping in mind that distance from an intersection for safety. So happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay. Anybody on council have questions?
Like a pretty straightforward housekeeping issue at this point.
Yep.
Yep.
My sympathy person had to put all those signs out there. Goodness.
Thank you, Terry.
I, I had no idea. I've seen their garage there and the park in front of it. I had no idea they didn't have a curb cut.
They creatively put some wood in the gutter so that the curb is easier to drive through, but that also impedes drainage. So that's not a great situation.
Yeah, no, nothing about that's good. I'd say let's get some public comment, John.
Sounds good. Let's see, we don't really have applicants. Well, we do have applicants, but I will lump the applicants comments if there are any into the public comments, just because there's so many of you. Anybody want to make a public comment? It is a pretty straightforward request, so probably doesn't need a lot of background. All right, seeing no hands up, I'm going to close public comment. Bring it back up here for deliberation and emotion.
Sounds like the right thing to do.
Yeah, I don't have the motion in front of me because I'm trying to iPad and Dropbox back and forth, but.
I move to approve the plat amendment to the Parkside subdivision to edit plat note two. We say lot nine may use Parkside Place for driveway access. Notwithstanding the foregoing, no lot bordering Green Street or Parkside Place shall use these streets for driveway or construction access. Any permit issued for a curb cut for lot nine shall have a setback that is greater of 10 feet from the property line at the corner or 20 feet from the cross street.
So, or second?
All right, motion's been made, seconded. Pam and Bo and Preston, that motion was adequate, even though we had all the addresses and, and property owners listed on the application. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm okay with the motion.
Great. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselors' cheek. Grambley.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
All righty, passes unanimously. Thank you, folks. That takes us to item number 14, another long one. Application for plat amendment. Location, all lots within Marie Scott Village subdivision. Addresses 275 TBD 245, 255 South Amelia Street, 236, 242, 267, 247, 239, 227, 215, and multiple TBD Marie Street, Zone Residential. Applicants Brad Blackwell. Owners Gordon P. and Rebecca J. Record, Melissa B. Mann, Bradley K. Blackwell, David P. Drew, Angela Fiorelli, and Mathro Pratt, the BSSK Family Trust, Jacob Randolph Nice, Josephine Valenius, Michael Carl Pennings, Mark A. and Carrie L. Cowan, Randall T. and Abigail S. Lang, and Douglas and Mary Reinhardt. Shay, take it away.
Before you get started, I just need to ask Bo a question because I think I might need to recuse myself on this one. So Bo, Mr. Blackwell and I are, have worked together up until you're right, and have professional relationship in his role as an EMS provider out there. And we last week just, we had conversation about this, his application, and this little concern that I might be considered ex parte. I think I should probably recuse myself.
Yeah. So as, as you know, Eric, the conflict rests with you and it's your decision to make. But if you feel that you do have a conflict, I would recommend that you do recuse yourself from this discussion.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a conflict. I didn't know whether that communication prior to this vote created an issue.
Well, you've disclosed it and you've disclosed it on the record. If there's anything more that you'd like to put forth, or you do feel that the conversation itself has prejudiced you from making a impartial decision, again, I think that you should evaluate that in the context of if you are conflicted or not.
I don't think I am, but I think just to avoid the appearance of that, I think I will just recuse myself on this one.
Okay, that's fine.
So I'm just going to shut my video down and go get a snack.
Okay, sounds good.
That was the reason.
Yeah, he's hungry. That's why I did it. All right, Shay, take it away.
Great. So this request is a plat amendment for the Marie Scott Village subdivision. This subdivision is located on Amelia Street, south of the highway. It does not include the northernmost five or six lots that are closest to the highway, but it's south of those lots. It includes 14 different properties there. So the request is to amend the plat note that set, that states each use, sorry, use of each lot is limited to a single family dwelling. And the request to amend it is to allow the lots to have accessory dwelling units in compliance with town codes. So on June 30th last week at the planning commission, they recommended approval of this plat amendment to council to edit the note to state each lot is limited to one principal dwelling unit. In addition, each lot may have an accessory dwelling unit if compliant with town code provisions as in effect from time to time. Any additional subdivision will be subject to excise tax per Ridgway Municipal Code. Chapter three, section four. The commission, there was much discussion about this, and the commission recommended that the council condition the approval upon a minimum of 67% of the owners signing the amendment. So the way the amendment is drafted right now has every So the way the amendment is drafted right now has every single owner listed. So if one property is owned by two people, both of those owners are listed. What I believe the Planning Commission was intending is that 67% of the lot owners, so that would be at least 10 out of the 14 lot owners would agree with this amendment for it to, for it to pass and for the town to, you know, finally approve it and actually get it recorded. The idea behind that 67% is that is in line with state statutes that address common interest communities. So happy to answer any questions on this one, but staff has recommended approval of this with all of our push to have accessory dwelling units for housing affordability and housing options as well as our, the community's interest in growing internally and trying to kind of densify our core without growing and taking up our ranch land and ag land and open space. This seems in line with the town's overall goals and such. So happy to answer any questions you guys may have on that.
Thanks Shay. Just so that we're all clear. I'm curious, what we're basically would be doing, if we voted to approve this request, it would essentially be with the condition that at least 10 of the property owners, lot owners, approve it by signing the the document that's in the request. Is that right?
Correct. And I think what our, what my interpretation of what the commission was saying, and John, you may have more to add to this, was, you know, the HOA doesn't exist over at Marie Scott. And typically, when you're doing a plat amendment like this, in Parkside, the HOA would sign it. And in order for the HOA to sign it, the HOA holds a meeting and has a vote. And if up to 67% of the people say that they vote for something or against something, that's what the HOA does. So we're almost like de facto saying, sure, we'll do it, but we're going to kind of act as your in-between and your HOA, hold your vote for you almost with those signatures. So hopefully that helps explain that a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So anybody on council have any questions? This one's a little more confusing, but it's pretty straightforward and.
So just to be sure I understand, there is no HOA for Marie Scott Village? And all, there is no, are there any like covenants outside of what's on the plat map? Or is that the document that encompasses all of those notes?
Yeah, so that's a great question. There originally, when this subdivision was created, there was an HOA that was incorporated with the Secretary of State as a business and all that. And there are covenants that exist. However, my understanding from the applicant and then the folks he has talked with, his neighbors there, is that, you know, the covenants are still there, but no one is actually actively enforcing them. There's no HOA meetings that has their registration with Secretary of State has long expired. So those documents, you know, the things kind of exist, but it just doesn't, there's no organization, they're not meeting, not active.
Shay, is Terry, you know, based on the changes to the land use codes that we passed a couple of meetings ago, how many of these lots would be eligible for an ADU? Some of them look pretty small.
Yeah, so all of them. We actually don't have a lot restriction in order, or lot size restriction generally in town to qualify for an ADU. What you may be thinking of, Terry, is we have a lot size requirement. If you would like to use your accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental, there is a lot size requirement there.
I thought there was a 6,000 foot requirement per lot to enable it to have a review.
If you want to use it as a short-term rental.
I see.
Shay, I guess I've got one question, and that's just, are there actively 10 people living in these that can actually approve this?
Yeah, that's a great question. I believe most of the lots are built out. There are a couple owners who own two lots, so right next to each other, where it's like the second lot looks unbuilt, but it's actually part of their yard. I think there are, there's one, I believe there's one short-term rental license up there. But we can collect signatures through mail and otherwise as well, if that helps answer your question, Russ.
Just a matter of making sure there is enough people to approve it. I guess that's what I was asking.
Yeah, my understanding, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I, and it doesn't have to be, the lot doesn't have to be built on to get a vote. You just need to be able to track down the owner and the the guy that first wanted to do an ADU and then discovered that it wasn't allowed by plat note. I don't know, Shay, have you noticed if he's here tonight?
I have not.
I'm forgetting his name. Was it?
Brad Blackwell. Yep, he's on.
Okay, so we could hear from Brad in a second. Brad reached out to all the property owners he could find, and I think he said there was only one trust that he couldn't locate somebody to respond to. So as soon as you guys have gotten any initial questions, comments, question made or answered, I'll give Brad, the formal applicant, a chance to address. We ready for that?
Yep.
Brad, go ahead and give us your take.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Thanks for hearing me, to address a couple of the questions I've just heard. You know, I bought my house four years ago. And I was given a set of covenants and said, these, this HOA does not exist. It was dissolved in 1995 when the last lot sold. So there's been a bit of discussion as I've gone around to talk to all my neighbors in the last couple of months about this process. I've come across some interesting answers about our HOA. And the majority of the people I've talked to have all lived here longer than I have, say the HOA doesn't exist. Shay kind of helped me. I didn't realize HOAs had to be registered with the state and they actually had a license. And, you know, I'm unable to find anything about a Marie Scott subdivision. We've never had a meeting. I've never heard of a meeting. And there's some people on the meeting here, in this meeting, who I think can, lived here longer than me, can speak to the fact that I don't think an HOA exists here. That being said, I am, you know, I'm, I want, I'm glad there's a 67% vote process required by the Planning Commission and you guys, because if I don't get 67% of the neighborhood, I don't want to move forward with this. Like, I feel like, you know, since we don't have an HOA, we need to have some kind of vote. And fortunately, like, this is helping that. I have, over the last couple of months, done my best to walk around the neighborhood, kind of tell everyone what I, what I thought, what was going on of paramount, if not all. You know, I'm not, I can't speak for everyone, but most people, I was under the impression, had no idea you couldn't build an ADU here either. So I went about this process, went and introduced myself formally to all my neighbors, printed up all the documents that I got from Shay, the staff report, because all of a sudden, everybody had some signs in their yard. Thanks, Terry. And I, I wanted to be very transparent in this process as far as, like, I live in this neighborhood. And, but I also, you know, I've been thinking about an ADU for a number of years and things have finally kind of worked out where I could potentially do this. So I have no interest in short-term rental. I'm getting into this process with the idea of long-term rental and living on my property and providing, you know, yes, financially, it has to work out for me, otherwise I wouldn't be doing it. But I've lived in this region for 27 years, in the town of Ridgway for four, and I'm well aware of housing. And I have lots of friends who cannot find places to live around here and in Telluride and the whole area. So, you know, my goal in this, and I've talked to some of my neighbors about this, is to like, you know, yes, I can benefit, but also I am, I'm in the game for long-term affordable housing. I have no, no, no plans, no desire to get into any short-term rental. And I'll end by saying, you know, I'm glad that the community or that our neighborhood has provided the platform to make this decision as a neighborhood. I don't want to make this decision on my own. And while I don't know if I can make everyone happy, what I can do is, you know, we can, we can decide this as a group. And I think that's very important and I'm willing, if I can't get 10 signatures or 10 people to agree, then I'm, I'm going to move on from this and probably save a lot of money and some headache in the process. That being said, and the last question I answered is, I reached out, I've contacted, there's 14 lots, there's 12 owners. There are the two owners who own empty lots, then there's two undeveloped, or I think there's actually, there's two undeveloped lots. I've spoken to 11 of the 12 owners, so that'd be 12 of the 14 lot owners. And, you know, I can say, oh, they all want it, they don't. That'll come down to the signatures and the proof will be there. But I've gotten in general, I can't say from everyone, but I've gotten in general, a very good reception to the idea of doing this. And so I think I have a number to get in touch with the trust. And I, you know, even if I don't need the trust's signature, my goal was to talk to everyone because it affects their property and I think that's important. And again, I've spoken to 11 of 12 owners and I'm trying to get ahold of the BSSK trust. So if you got their number, let me know and I'll get back to you. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Brad. All right, I'll open this up to public comment. Anybody, if we have any neighbors here or property owners in the subdivision? I see Angela's hand up.
Hi, yes, this is Angela Ferrelli. I live at 236 Marie Street. And I just wanted to, you know, follow up on what Brad has said when my husband and I brought, bought our lot five and a half years ago, we were also told that there is no active HOA. We had specifically asked the realtor about that as we weren't really interested in having an active HOA. We've also had many friends who've had to move out of town as they've been unable to find housing. So I think that being able to allow ADUs in the subdivision would be beneficial for the town to be able to increase housing inventory, which I feel is, you know, kind of desperately needed. And lastly, I'd like to also support this in terms of preventing urban sprawl and increasing density within the town limits and keeping as much open space as possible. Thanks very much.
Great, thanks, Angela. I see Jake's hand up, Jake Nice.
Yes, hello. Hi, I'm also one of the property owners in this neighborhood, 267 Murdy Street. And I also want to voice support in favor of this change. Brad has come around and talked to me and everyone else several times and has been very open and transparent and very great about the process. And this, this change is in support of kind of the objectives of a lot of Ridgway Town Council and what I believe is right as well in increasing density within city limits. And I just want to offer my full-throated support of this change. That's all.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jake. Anyone else? Melissa Mann. Get you unmuted.
There you go. We can hear.
Yeah, I own 242 Marie Street and then the lot below that. So I'm one of the owners with two lots. And one of my lower lot, the empty lot, is next to Brad's. And he's been very gracious and he's come around and I agree, he's been very transparent. And I fully support him in this process. And I am hopeful that he's able to move forward with his goals.
Great, thank you, Melissa. Anyone else? Not seeing any other hands up. Give me one more second. Anybody wants to weigh in? All right, seeing no more, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to us to deliberate.
Given, given the overall support from the community members who've shown up here and that this is consistent with the master plan and our desire to increase the density, I think this is the right way forward.
I do want to note real quick that this is an official hearing. Do we need to read in the two, the letter from the other property owner to the record?
Probably. Was that letter?
There's a, there's a letter in opposition in our packet and then there's a letter of support from the applicant, but we've heard from him. I feel like we should read the letter from Douglas Reiner, briefly summarize it into the record.
I believe that was part of the commission.
Okay, so that's not for this. Okay.
Unless there was a new one that I wasn't, that I didn't get copied on.
Maybe it's, no, it was to, you're right. Sorry, Shay. I didn't.
No, you're good. But I am going to unmute Gordon real quick because I'm not sure if he's unable to raise his hand or not. And I'm wondering if he's wanting to speak.
Gordon Reiker, did you want to speak? He's still not unmuted.
No, I've asked, so I'm not sure if something will pop up or not for them to click on, but just.
We're giving you a chance to weigh in, Gordon.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. I very much support what Brad wants to do. I appreciate the fact that he's been around numerous times to ask for our input and fully disclose what it is that he's looking to do. And I just wanted to add my voice to that as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks, Gordon.
Cool.
All right, one last for anyone else. All right, seeing. Oh, I saw you unmuted yourself for a second. Did you have anything to throw out?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll bring it back up here for deliberation.
Yeah, I'm with Russ. I think this goes right along with what we hope. You know, we can't unilaterally go in and overrule subdivisions, but if we're going by state law and with this, you know, 67% of property owners, I feel like that is an appropriate action considering our goals for density and all of our stated master plan ideas.
Yeah, certainly it's in full compliance and support of the master plan, that's for sure.
It's an easier lift with the 67%, there's still a few lots. Trying to do this in River Park would be a lot more difficult. And also sympathies to Shay for the 17 new signs. He must have a heck of a forearm by now with that sledgehammer, huh?
Andrew Hill. All right, so somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the plat amendment to the Marie Scott Village subdivision to edit the plat note to say each lot is limited to one principal dwelling unit. In addition, each lot may have an accessory dwelling unit if compliant with town code provisions as an effect from time to time. Any additional subdivision will be subject to, yeah, excise tax per Ridgway Municipal Code, chapter three, section four. All this with the condition that a minimum of 67% of lot, of property owners sign the amendment.
I second it.
Okay. Motion, that's because she made the motion. Motion's made by Tessa, seconded by Terry. Roll call vote, please.
Councillor's cheek. Aye. Grambley.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
All right, so Eric, you're welcome to come back in if you're listening. That one passes unanimously with one recusal. And that takes us to the last of our public hearings for tonight. Item number 15, application for minor subdivision. for minor subdivision. Parenthesis checking with Bo to see that this qualifies as a minor subdivision, location Yates subdivision lot four, address 423 North Amelia Street, zone Historic Residential, applicant and owner Dan Bartashis.
I think that's a carryover, yeah, it does qualify as a minor subdivision. I think that was just a carryover on a draft.
Yeah, I'm nervous I sent the wrong draft or something, sorry about that.
No worries.
So this is a request for a minor subdivision, it's different than the replat we heard for Ellen Hunter, this request is one lot going into two, Ellen's request was three lots going into two, so that's the difference here. This property is located up by the elementary school on North Amelia Street and the little diagonal road that I learned does not have a name. It's current, this property is currently occupied by a single-family home and some accessory structures and the proposal here would split the lot into two different properties. Last week, the planning commission recommended approval of this minor subdivision with a handful of conditions that were listed in the staff report with a modification to condition number three, so I modified that condition in the proposed motion language below, but staff's recommendation is to approve this with all of those conditions, it's some generally basic stuff like setting the monuments, complying with some of the criteria like getting a written statement from the weed control expert or getting rid of any weeds, removing a shed and making some changes on the plat map and some other items there, nothing I don't think was huge if the other commissioners remember that, right, but happy to answer any other questions on this as well.
Okay, thanks Shay. Anybody on council have any questions or comments for Shay? Or potentially for the applicant? Dan Bartashis here tonight, I don't see him. Of course he had his, I think it was his granddaughter's name on his.
Well, that's right.
Last time. Could be Ryan, could be his son.
Peyton.
Peyton, there it is, Peyton. Anyway, any questions from council for today? No? It's another pretty straightforward one. Dan, is that you under Peyton?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think we, no, I think we covered it all at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, great. Anybody on council have questions for Dan? Okay, I will open this up to public comment, anybody in the audience want to bring up questions or comments? Give it a minute. It's pretty straightforward, so I don't imagine there'll be comments, but. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up to us to deliberate.
You know, again, this is an infill project that I think is right in line with the master plan and, yeah, I'm excited to see what they built there, I'm in favor.
The most interesting thing to me is that there's still, even with the minor subdivision, the two remaining lots are still quite good size, so. And we did have them adjust the new lot line separating the two so that it's parallel to the Amelia Street property line, talked about some shed removal, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks good. Which one are we on? Well, that being said, where is that? I recommend that we approve the minor subdivision for Yates subdivision lot four with the conditions as set by staff recommendation, do I need to read them all?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
As staff recommendation would be suspicious.
Oh, okay. Good thinking though.
Second.
Cool.
All right, motions made and seconded. Roll call vote please.
Counselors Cheek.
Aye.
Rambley.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Diler.
He's muted.
Okay, Mayor Per Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Eric gave you thumbs up, there we go, he's muted. All right, passes unanimously, thanks everybody.
I have bad internet.
Right, thank you.
All right, thanks Dan.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep. All right, that brings us to under policy matters, item number 16, the renewal of liquor license for Steps Tavern that was kind of tabled from our last meeting, I believe. Preston, this says your name on it, are you going to lead it off for us?
Yes, sir, thank you mayor, members of council, so this is a liquor license renewal application from Dan Easton and Steps Tavern and it's a follow-up from the last regular council meeting in June. Council asked staff to meet with Dan to talk about the noise complaints and the prospect of putting measures in place to mitigate, you know, noise from inside or directly outside of the establishment. Shane, Pam and myself, we met with Dan and his attorney a few weeks back to talk through the issue and talk through some noise mitigating measures. And as you'll see in the memo, Dan, it was a great meeting, Dan agreed to employ a couple of measures, the first one being signage on the inside and outside of the building that comply with town code, that encourage keeping noise levels down, or at least to a minimum, out of respect for neighboring property owners. And let me find my other note, the second one was, he said at the time, and we can let Dan give us an update on this, but he said he was seeking an agreement with the owners of Taco Del Nar for use of their patio space as kind of a formal, formally designated smoking area. And he and his employees would actively encourage patrons to utilize that area for smoking, as long as it isn't within 15 feet of an entrance or an exit. So that was the outcome of that meeting and Dan is here, I believe, I think he left and then, yep, he's here, so I'll unmute him.
Hi guys, thanks. So to touch on the Taco Del Nar, can everybody hear me, just to be sure?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. So to touch on the Taco Del Nar idea to send them to their front patio, which is 10 feet from the highway instead of like 30 or 40 from my front door, we mutually agreed that after looking at everything, insurance-wise, liability-wise, our camaraderie and friendship as business owners, it's just not going to work to send people over to their front porch after hours, unfortunately, so. But we did come to an agreement on disagreeing, I guess, agree to disagree on that, so unfortunately that's not going to work, maybe I'm all for making some different, having different ideas, we were thinking about motion lights and such, the signage is in place inside of the building and three signs outside lining the entire sidewalk, the public sidewalk, there's three signs clearly stating that, you know, they could be cited for noise, we could be cited for noise and they may not be allowed readmission to the tavern if they're having, if they are a problem, if they are a noise issue. So that's the measures already taken.
What's the feeling of the council? Any comments, questions for Dan, for staff?
I'll weigh in a little bit here, I just, I'm not sure I have a full opinion on this yet, but I hate to do anything to really hamstring a business in town. And I think Dan said at our last, at the last council meeting that that, those later hours from 10 to 1:00 or 10 to 2:00 were significant income producers for him at that point. But at the same time, you know, I think we just have to, I can't see that we can allow the noise burden on the neighbors to continue. I mean, short of him actually having a bouncer out there to shush people, I'm not sure what the solution is.
One of the things, and I know it's dark and I don't know how cameras work or where they can go, but I know Dan, because we're a small town, has a lot of repeat clientele. I mean, one of the things, I think we were trying to bring up with the idea of a noise meter and cameras to identify who those voices who are loud are, I mean, I would really encourage Dan to think of a way to help identify his customers who might be regular repeat offenders in this. You know, I know I've been to Dan's bar, but I don't smoke, so I don't hang out on the street and so, you know, I don't see that. The signage is really great, but I feel like Dan is still kind of offloaded, I'm looking for another idea, I guess is what I'm saying, I feel like the signs, people know they're not supposed to shout, I don't know in the middle of their conversation after a few drinks that the signs are going to be an active reminder. And since we don't have marshals on duty during those late hours, like you alluded to Eric, where money's being made, is it really realistic for patrons to get individual citations?
Can I address that real quick?
Absolutely, please do, I guess I'm just brainstorming.
It's okay, yeah, I want to brainstorm, you know, I'm the one that brought the initial ideas, there are absolutely zero ideas brought forth by anybody else, so I would appreciate ideas. So I just, real quick, would like any documentation or citations that were given due to noise or actual documented complaints of noise, I believe when we dissected it, there were two complaints for the whole year by two separate people, maybe three, but I could be mistaken. Let's just see what kind of numbers of complaints we're talking here.
I don't know, staff, is that something that we can get an answer to now, or?
Yeah, mayor, so there have been a couple of letters and I can let Pam talk to the letters that we've received, but, you know, Dan in our meeting with, you know, sitting down with Shane, Shane did articulate that he, or at least his team in the marshal's office have received at least a couple of calls over the course of the last year, now, I don't know, is Shane on here?
Hey, Dan.
Yeah, he is, I'm going to unmute Shane to talk to that, but I do recall that being an element of the conversation.
Okay, yes, and my attorney recalls that as well. It's, I believe you probably have more emails saying, from people that live inside the same building, inside the same building as the tavern and across the alleyway, just as many letters saying they don't have any issues as people who do have issues. I'm just, I'm just trying to weigh like the, wow, goodness. I'll let that, I'll let whatever was happening there calm down, okay, good. I just feel like if there's like an equality balance here, then, you know, I'm still going to continue to do what I can and all of my patrons will tell you that I've been out there and asked them to quiet, as well as any of my employees, they've always seen their face, step out the door and say, guys, you're being a little loud out here, but you know, it's not, it's not an outdoor bar, it's a basement bar. So, again, let's look at the for and the against, so the complaints and the pros, and weigh those out and then let's also mitigate the noise, find another way, let's find a way to do this, I'm all for it, I already did the signage, I talked Taco Del Nar, I really wish that would have worked out, but from a business and an insurance aspect, that really just wouldn't work out. Yeah, just whatever we can work on, because I love being part of this community and I know hundreds of people in this community that love just being able to go out after 9:30.
Well, I think you make a really good point, and one of the reasons we need to think about how we can make it work is a basement bar is really ideal because the bar itself doesn't have noise.
Doesn't make noise.
So it's just kind of figuring out how to appropriately mitigate the exterior piece so people's quiet enjoyment of their property isn't violated.
Right, right, agreed. And we come to the issue that we've talked about many times of, this is historic commercial, it's historic commercial, it's been here way before, it's been here for a long time zone that way, and then we have historic residential right across an alleyway, right? Like, it's difficult, I understand, so I am willing to work out any ideas, you know, but I'd love to get this, I'd love to get this license passed and we continue to work together.
I guess I would throw out that, you know, the question of, you know, historic business up against historic residential happens everywhere, it happens in communities all over the world and that it wasn't that the historic business zone was created before the historic residential, they were both created essentially at the same time, so I don't think one has any more value than the other or weight in consideration.
I agree.
And I think, you know, that while the recent letters have come from a couple of neighbors a couple of times, in the past, there were more than one complaint from the apartments right across the little alley from your business, so, you know, I guess the thing I keep coming back to is, it seems to me in a small town like this where my sense is that most of your clientele is pretty consistent, you probably know, I would guess you know 75% of your clientele, is that a safe estimate?
Well, John, my credit card statements, you know, I had 3,500 unique customers last year, unique meaning they've never been there before.
Okay. Well, but my point was, it's, am I wrong that it's, what it tends to be is the smokers going out to have a cigarette and hanging it on the sidewalk outside the door and
Yeah, correct.
laughing and joking and having a good time, which, you know, I'm not a guy, but it seems like maybe there's a few key of your clientele that are smokers that you could just kind of enlist to say, hey, I need your help to help make sure I maintain my license by you guys just keeping to encourage people to keep it down.
Absolutely.
I've been somebody who goes to bars and attends concerts and all this stuff for years, there are ways to have reasonable conversations and not get people all stirred up if you're reasonable, so that's always been one of my thoughts, is that maybe, maybe you could kind of try and recruit a few key people who could volunteer to just try and be the voice of reason, and in a small town like this, I would think that would really help.
I just did a Google search, Dan, for a noise meter, I don't know where the speaker is and where the uptick is, you do have a window there, it's $65 on Amazon.
Yeah, I know, I've seen it.
Self-monitoring bit is hard, like, you know, just like you said, recruiting those smokers but giving them some tools when it's like, no dude, you're really too loud, because you're not a.
Right.
They make those bark collars for dog, you put them on as soon as they shock them.
I'm for that, it doesn't sound humanitarian, but I'm.
Pass them out on the way out the door. Pass them out on the way out the door.
Jeff, I see your hand up, but I've got people, I've got people with their hands up in front of you, but we'll catch you, okay?
Got you. So real, real quick, guys, I, I really appreciate, you know, every effort we've all taken here. On the nights that it is really busy and we are at capacity down there, there's 100, you know, people downstairs, you know, we might have 20 at a time outside. However, we have a bouncer. Every, every weekend that is super busy like that, we have a bouncer and, and they do go up and check. But, you know, on those weekends where it's going to be guaranteed to be noisy till late, we could absolutely move them to the front of the door. This is just brainstorming, move them to the front of the door and have them check IDs and take money there for entry fee or whatever. And then they could better mitigate noise, you know, so that, that could take care of these big, really noisy nights, you know?
I like this thought.
That would be, that would probably be helpful.
And it would jut at the bottom of the stairs.
That big long line? Well, then we might have a line, a line noise problem, who knows? I guess we'll cross that, cross that bridge when we get to it.
I see a bunch of hands up, so I want to
Okay, I guess that's, that's the comments from me. Yeah, I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Those are my, my comments for now.
Okay, thanks, Dan. So I'm just going to go down the list the way I see them ordered. Paul's phone, I'm guessing that's Paul Chode again?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Paul.
All right, I, I love the idea of shot collars. That's awesome. Past that, to me, the solution's pretty cut and dry. And being a patron of there and actually owning a bar in the same spot over a decade ago, I dealt with the same issues. And, and to me, if the noise ordinance is not being violated from the bar itself, how do we know at this point? I'm going to go back to the earlier agenda item that I commented on. The town doesn't own a decibel meter. And, and it has to be measured from a certain distance away. So if it's on the bars, on, on steps, if it's their fault, it needs to be documented by an officer and, and formally presented. Other than that, patrons leaving the bar, I mean, what's the difference between them leaving any other establishment in this town? Why, why would anywhere else be held to a different standard? To me, the solution is very clear. You, you get a decibel meter. If, if the source of the noise is from a patron leaving the bar, then it falls on them. If it's from the bar itself, it falls on the bar. You know, and, and the same can be said about, you know, the mountain air music in the summertime. It could be said about several different things. But, uh, you know, it's just, that, that's my opinion. And, and I have been a patron there for a long time. And I, I know about every other local patron that goes in there. And I'd have to say that Dan and his staff are, are very, they're, they're on top of it. And, but also the patrons, when I walk outside and I know when several of my friends walk outside and they hear people screaming over their voice, they've had a few too many or whatever else, like, we'll, we'll try to mitigate that. And, and the signage is in place. To me, it's, it's on our enforcement and, and delineating where that line is drawn when people are out on public property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I've got Natalie Pateko. Go ahead, Natalie.
Hi. I am a homeowner of Ridgeway and a frequent flyer of Steps Tavern. But I can also sympathize with the supposed noise complaints as I do have to get up early and drive to Montrose to go to work during the week. I get that. I like to go to bed pretty early, but I don't think that it's unreasonable to ask for a marshal patrol the area at night. And I understand that Dan has never had an official citation for noise, but he's taken liberty to specifically call officers to show up for holidays, knowing that people can get rambunctious and loud. He's taken steps, no pun intended, to help the situation, but I feel that as a bartender, you can't risk moving the bar to quiet people outside of the threshold. And I'm kind of curious what's going to happen when the culinary school or tavern opens in between the old firehouse and True Grit, because there's residents that live right above there. And how are we going to mitigate the noise with that? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Natalie. Tammy Tuttle.
Okay, sorry, I was working with unmuting there. I want to echo some of what Natalie just said and some of what Paul just said. And as in a small town, as always scuttlebutt, and I've heard that we may be modifying the hours of our sheriff and our county for law enforcement, which may offset some of the late night opportunities for noise issues. Having had the grit for a couple of decades, I have always dealt with not late night, early morning. It's not fair to say always. For a very long period of time, I had a neighbor who was very discouraged that I had drop off orders at 6:00 in the morning with my purveyors, which had always been there before. They decided to move into historic business district. There's just some give and take, understanding they're of the same age. And when you live in a small community and you live that close to the highway or to businesses, there could be some. I think for the most part, we have a well behaved community and the occasion is there. Have to admit, I'm somewhat shocked and saddened to hear that the license was in question at all. I did not think town council was in the business of trying to destroy some of our local economy versus try to support it, especially during these challenging times.
Thanks, Tammy. Ellen.
Hi. So I guess I'm going to echo Paul a little and, and several other comments and say, there's been zero citation. I'm not even a frequent flyer at Steps. I don't go really at all. But we seriously have one bar in town. And I think that there should be some give and take and some understanding when people live in a historic business district or near a historic business district, that there's going to be some noise, either like Tammy said, at 6:00 AM when deliveries happen, or later at night when there might be some other things, or when there's a concert series happening in the park. I think that there is some issue with our town that we've become very, I don't know, stuck up with the fact that we think that we should only have our way of life and not understanding that there is other ways and other things to do. So in that, I really hope that the town council will continue their liquor license. They actually have had, like, zero citations. And if they've actually only had two or three complaints in some 300 plus days of business, I think that's a very small percentage. So my vote is to let the bar keep going.
Hey, thank you, Ellen. Jeff Toncliff.
Hey, John. I want to quick say one of the things you, you brought up. You were talking about Dan asking a couple of people to go out there and help address people. I'm a, I'm a regular at Steps. I'm also a smoker. And I'm an individual that, I don't know, it's been over a year. I, I've helped balance at Steps, but it's been over a year that if I go out and smoke, Dan's told me before to help address people. If I'm out there, we go to the corner on the weather vane, right on the highway. And we have, we do have now noise ordinance in this town. And late night, I don't know how many people are laying on this highway, but there's a nice sign on the top of Ridgeway Hill that says, no Jake breaks. I don't know how many times, from three blocks away, the people I've been outside talking to have had to stop communicating when a 18-wheeler comes through with a Jake break. If we're going to be enforcing across the rural, across the board, do we need to be enforcing across the board? We have a noise ordinance, we have rules. I feel like we're picking on one individual who is doing a lot of active attempts to appease the town for a few squeaky wheels. There's a huge community here that supports Steps and what they've brought in this community. I remember when I moved here five years ago, the only late night bar we had at the time was the distillery across the highway. Now we got something closer in town. We also live in a community where people don't drive and they walk home. I have friends who live on the thoroughfare going through Conwood Park into Solar Ranch. They'll also be texting, like, what happened last night? I heard a lot of people coming through. We walk home. People are allowed to pinpoint just that and not say it's somebody walking home without a law enforcement person out there with a decibel reader to really see what the violation is. There's no true due process in this whole situation here. That's, y'all know my ladies, she's lawyers, due process. We need the facts. We need the evidence before you affect somebody's livelihood. I also have another individual here that would like to speak, doesn't have Zoom. So I am going to finish here, if y'all will allow. I have somebody right beside me who lives on the alley behind Steps that would like to talk. Is that all right?
Sure. Go ahead and identify yourself.
I'm Chantel Messer and I live on South Flora. And I live right behind the bar. And I very rarely hear anything from the bar. In fact, the thing that keeps me up late at night is to tell you I had 500 at 4:00 AM, when it's like a racetrack out here. I hear other businesses and their live bands, but rarely hear anything from Steps but an occasional truck start. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, I see Richard Juice Penny. Go for Juice. Let's see, I don't see audio. Yeah, I do. Go ahead if you can unmute yourself. There you go. You were muted for a second there. Looks like you're unmuted. Richard, can you talk? Juice? All right, looks like we can hear you. Or maybe not. All right, I'm going to go to Greg Young and come back to you, Juice. Greg Young? Should be able to unmute yourself. We can hear you now. Greg? Greg, are you going to speak? All right, I'm going to move on to Jake Neese, sorry.
Hello, I wanted to just lodge one more comment in support of Steps. I think people who are complaining in the middle of a, a business district, you know, have, have a certain amount of responsibility when they move into that area to know the character of the neighborhood. And if you move in right next to a bar, then that's something you should expect. This is a, an issue that's impacted a lot of different communities that I've seen. And I just, just want to, just want to add one more vote in favor of local business against what is probably just a minority, but a vocal minority. So just plus one on my part, that's all.
Thanks, Chase. Jake, I got to say though, this argument about who was there first, particularly the two residences that have been most vocal in their opposition to this, they have lived there long before that building even existed. So, and not, I'm not saying that that should count necessarily. The, the property was zoned commercial at the time. But, you know, it, it really doesn't, in my view, it's not about who was there first. There are lots of other complicating factors about impacts and how we deal with them. And my God, that Jake breaks is one of the things. A day does not go by, usually for me, it's first thing in the morning where I hear some slimies coming down Ridgeway Hill with their Jake breaks on. And I'm like, come on deputies, where are you guys out there stopping these guys and getting them to stop using their Jake breaks? That drives me crazy. So we all have our pet peeves. I think we're trying to work through this. And I think we're making progress. I've got, I see four more hands up. I'd like to take those comments and then we can hopefully move on. Greg Young, are you ready to talk? Can you unmute yours? There we go, you're unmuted.
Was it me?
Are you Greg Young?
No, I'm Tate. It's Tate. I don't know how it showed up as Greg Young. How you doing, John?
Okay, so this is Tate.
Tate Rogers.
Tate Rogers, okay.
So I'm the, actually I own the building where Dan, Dan's a tenant of mine. And so I'd like to express, you know, my opinion as to how we should interpret all this. It's a HB property. It's been HB as long as the neighbors have owned their property. We pay commercial taxes. We, you know, when they bought their property, they knew they were buying a property next to a historic business property. And the use by right is what's going on there right now. The question as to enforcement, that, that falls on the town. That's not the, that's not Dan's responsibility to go out in the street and enforce anything. If you guys want to stop people from talking loud, then you got to hire somebody to do that. That's not Dan's problem. So I appreciate your time. All I want to say is, you know, he's trying to do business, he's doing everything by the, you know, the use by right. And so I hope you consider that and keep that in mind. And I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Tate.
You bet.
Tom McKinney. Can somebody unmute Tom? There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think there are some great comments this evening. Everybody's got some, some good ideas, I think. I, I'd like to say that, that I, I support Dan. I support a successful business that he's running. I support all local businesses in this pandemic and when we're not having a pandemic. Another thing is, I don't think that this nor last month had anything to do with whether Dan was going to keep his liquor license or not. That's a done deal in my mind. All we've been talking about are the conditions. And to speak to conditions, a couple of points. Number one, I, I thought the thing I liked hearing the most this evening was all the people who had proactive ideas on how, what potential solutions could be. For, for the, the way that I feel, I don't think that Dan and the Steps could make too much noise. I don't think there are decibels that exist that would be too much in his bar. But outside his door, if, if everyone went out the door, smoked and went back in or got in their car and went home, I don't think there'd be a problem on earth. The, the problem that seems to exist in my mind is when bunches of people, you know, it almost seems to me like it's more fun outside than it is indoors. And it does get really loud. And it does get really loud. One of the proactive things, I haven't heard two neat proactive things, is people who are regulars at the bar that Dan asks, oh, you're going out to take a smoke? Do me a favor, if you hear any loud noises, just, just say something. Don't be an asshole. Just mention that this is also a residential neighborhood. You know, the other idea that we talked about last month that I haven't heard too much about, but, well, they were talking last, last month about a noise meter with a light. And I was just thinking of nothing more than a speaker outdoors that was piped down and either put into a headphone or be right there at the bar so someone could not, I mean, there's no way on earth, anyone in that bar can have an idea of what's going on outside. And there's enough noise in there. It would seem to me that if they had a, instead of a noise meter, simply a speaker that's picking up the noise outside the building and piping it back into the bar. I hope Dan utter and total success. And I don't think this is rocket science and I don't, and I'm positive that this can all work out. Thank you very much Town Council for considering this license or the conditions on this license. Have a good evening.
Thanks Tom. All right, next up Larry Mallard.
Hi, thank you very much. My name's Larry Mallard.
We can hear you.
Hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. My wife Mitzi and I actually live in the building and we're right above STEPS Tavern. I've been here about two and a half years. I did send a letter in. We didn't think we were going to be home in time tonight to make the call, but I would like to just share. We fully support Dan. We're not regulars down in the bar, but we do occasionally. We have heard noise occasionally, but we obviously made the decision to move into a building that was a commercial building and, and had noises like that. But nothing that we've heard in our time in two and a half years here has been anything that was overwhelming for us. Dan's always been very professional and run into him. He's even gone out of his way to let us know if he's got a band tonight. But I want to let you know as people that live literally 15 feet from this building and 15 feet out after, we're fully supportive of them. We live in an area that we know is going to generate some noise. And again, we've had no issues with it. We live probably as close to them as anyone else can or has, and we have for a while. So just want to pass off our support from people that live in the building.
Great, thanks, thank you Larry. Next up I see Damon Bailey.
Hi, thanks. So I am a property owner at 181 South Lena, which is in the neighborhood. My master bedroom windows are approximately 300 feet from the doorway to STEPS. My wife and I sleep with our windows open probably eight months out of the year. And I rarely hear any noise from that direction. I do feel that when I purchased my property nearly three years ago, I made the conscious decision that I was moving into the heart of town. And by doing so, I accept that I hear delivery trucks. I hear music in the park. I hear the speakers at Eatery. And to me, that's a decision we make when we choose to live in the heart of a community. You're going to hear some noise. I feel like if you're really upset with the noise, maybe living in the heart of town isn't a great plan. That being said, you know, the community and the people at the bar encouraging one another to be respectful is just great. I think everybody will continue to do that. But for me as a neighbor, I've had zero complaints about noise coming from the tavern. Thank you.
Great, thanks Damon. Let's see, one more comment and then I think I'll close this off. It's a phone number, 504-920-7454.
Hey, how's it going? All right, it's Juice again, Richard Juice Penny. I had to switch to my phone. I couldn't get the mic to work on my computer. Sorry about that. So, you know, I've just moved here, I've been over here over a year. I'm from New Orleans. Obviously we have bars. Obviously they're in neighborhoods. You know what the bars do back home when there's a noise complaint? They call the police. We can't even call the police. There's nobody here. I have no problem with confrontation. I will go outside and police it, but I ain't backing down. Then what happens when there's a fistfight? We call the police? Oh wait, there are no police. It's not the business owner's job to police the streets. Let's be real, we're not getting noise, we're not getting decimal readers. Let's be real, that's not happening. It is your job as a town to police the streets. Literally, figuratively, every single way. It is not the business owners. Dan does a great job of going out there, like Jeff said. I go out there and if I see people being rowdy, I'm like, guys, step towards the highway. Step towards the highway. But at some point, somebody's not going to like that and we're going to have a confrontation. But there's no police. There's no police. That's laughable to me. Like to sit here and say, we're going to hold your license hostage because of three noise complaints? That's unethical and immoral. That's all I got to say.
All right, thanks Juice. I think what you have to understand is this is not in New Orleans. We have a very limited budget. We have a very limited law enforcement staff. I'm not sure how many of the public would like to see us have to put a whole bunch of our very limited budget at this point into giving our base, maybe we'd have to hire more law enforcement personnel to cover longer shifts and to have graveyard shifts or whatever. I just, in town of a thousand, I don't see that happening. I mean, your point's well taken. The cops just don't, they don't, they aren't able to patrol after 11 because they, there aren't enough of them to cover all the hours of the day. Like I say, point well taken, but it's, this is in New Orleans and we've got some challenges we have to deal with legitarily. And I like to think that as a small town, we can do things more of a small town basis and not having to call the cops. So anyway, I'm not sure the progress we're making. I see more hands up. I'd like to, I'd like to wrap this up. We have a whole bunch more on our agenda tonight. Dan and Jeff, you both have your hands up, but you've both spoken before. If you've got something new to add and could do it briefly, please do so.
Hi, yeah, I do. I appreciate you guys all listening to some of these testimonies, I guess I would call them. But also, I don't, I don't think Juice's comments prior were actually that far off. I mean, I understand, you know, we're limited and stuff like that. But if we can get millions of dollars in the arts and millions of dollars in these other things, I think that per our marshal bylaws, marshals living inside the county, I think that we could set aside some money and maybe, maybe some per diem, maybe some, something, help them with their rent so that they could be here, they could be available for a graveyard shift of sorts. I don't think that comparing us to New Orleans is, is what he was going for. I think it's more so, like, like Tate said as well, like Juice reiterated, like many of these people think is, we as a town, you're asking us as patrons or us as community members to step up in a confrontation from somebody from Texas to tell them to be quiet outside of an establishment? That might, or major problems than noise mitigation. That's all, so, I mean, because you commented on it John, I just had to reiterate what I think was said. And that's all from me. Thank you guys for, for hearing us out. I really hope that we can come to an agreement and really make the neighbors happy, but also the rest of the community. Thanks.
Thank you Dan. Let's see, did I want, Jeff, you still have your hand up? You got something to add?
Hey, can you hear me guys?
Yep.
All right, yeah, I kind of rearranged what, what Dan said. There's a consensus with, with, what is going on. And it's the unfortunate part of it. I ran bars in Tuscaloosa, I've helped Dan out bounce here, I try and help him with his crowd. But Dan's insurance doesn't cover coming out and dealing with a confrontation on the street. The big issue is the law enforcement side of it. We're doing a lot in this community trying to get subsidized housing and trying to do this. Our biggest problem is when it gets late night and it's on-call officers, nobody's in the community. So this is going to be a big future thing. But as we build these subsidized housings and all this, it'd be something to look into for the town to make a subsidized unit for our law enforcement, for whoever's on call that night to actually be in our community to handle a situation. We're kind of getting nitpicky over music, but there is a bigger issue here with more things that can happen. I mean, it's not just loud noise. There can be domestic violence, there can be other situations. The fact that we don't have a law enforcement presence late night in this county, it's kind of, it blows my mind. And as we continue to grow and push for our subsidized housing, I would really push for Town Council to try and make a spot for whatever marshal is on that night to have a place to stay in Ridgway Town Limits to be our law enforcement presence through the night. And it'll help us on a lot of situations, not just a noise violation. And that's all I have for you. I appreciate y'all letting me talk again.
All right, thanks Jeff. I mean, I don't have any doubt that the time will come sooner than later than we have to. We probably have to hire more law enforcement staff to figure out a way to have somebody on call a little more around the clock. But we're not there yet. And I would also say, you, you just mentioned that we're coming down hard on the music. The music isn't the question here. This is sidewalk noise when people are outside having a cigarette, get some fresh air, whatever it is. I actually like the idea of, that's in the proposal of getting people to move around to the corner onto the patio in front of Taco Del Mar, so they're not actually broadcasting down Cora Street. They're broadcasting onto the highway where all the traffic already is. So that would be key in my mind.
So John, you bring up a really good point.
That sounds like a perfect option.
Yeah, it wasn't an option that was negotiated in here, but apparently one of the main problems that's creating this noise is around smoking. I mean, you know, we could come down hard on smoking, that's just kind of trading one problem for another. But, you know, potentially that's something we ought to look at separate from the details of this particular issue is, you know, the proximity of public smoking to residential neighborhood or something like that. I mean, that's probably not going to be very popular either. But it sounds to me like smoking is the precipitating situation which is causing the noise issue.
I mean, certainly rather than people, I'm sure there's noise associated with people walking home and leaving, but that's more concentrated in individual events rather than it continual over the evening.
Yeah, well, they're in motion, they're leaving, as opposed to congregating to smoke a cigarette. So, I mean, like I said, I don't, you know, in the spirit of trying to come up with something proactive that's a solution and not to further muddy the waters, but it seems like that's probably the underlying problem is allowing smoking that close to the bar. Now, to tell them to go out and, you know, walk next to the highway where traffic going by isn't a solution either. But, you know, maybe the town needs to create a big smoking court somewhere. Ugh, yeah. Like I said, it's one problem for another, but it sounds like that's one of the roots of the problem.
Well, and, you know, I, I've had many years in the summer, had experience with people coming, walking up the street, walking up Moffitt Street in front of my house, late at night, coming home from a party or a bar or whatever. I don't even know where they're coming from. They're loud as hell, they're making a whole bunch of noise. You know, you roll your eyes and roll over and go back to bed. That's, that's just the cost of living in town and you deal with it. And hopefully it doesn't get too, too prevalent or too common. But someone said earlier that that's, that's not Dan's problem and I agree with that. It's, the problem is that people who are congregating on the sidewalk right outside of STEPS while they're having a cigarette or whatever they're doing before going back into the bar and.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, is not, I know the criteria for approving a license does include impacts on the surrounding areas. Am I wrong? I know people have said Dan's not responsible for the sidewalk, which is partially true. People take individual responsibility. But I do believe that is actually a reason a license can be not issued, right? Am I wrong on that one? Pam, you might have it handier than me.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
I think that that would be a better question for the county.
Okay.
That there's, a license can be, the council has to take comments on how it affects the subsequent residents, but I'm not sure how that relates to noise.
Okay, I just, I know we talked about it with the initial license for, or the tavern or the patio a couple of years ago, but I'm not referring the exact wording.
Like Public Health and Welfare or something.
Yeah.
So that's.
Oh, was that you?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So that's just it, it's a health, safety and welfare kind of consideration that, that can come into play. But it has to be supported by the evidence that's, you know, presented on the record, if you will.
Which I think goes straight to the point of not having law enforcement there and thus not having records of citations. You know, it's just like, it's, you know, we can have this conversation all day long, but I do feel like ultimately, like, we don't have the standing to not approve this liquor license. And I also think it's an important part of the community. And yes, it negatively impacts some folks and I, I feel for them, like that sucks. It totally sucks. But it's also, you know, it's the many versus the few in some ways.
You know, I have an analogy. I'm sorry, bud.
Oh, it's just not to flip the burden onto our residents who've had complaints because we don't have law enforcement and we don't have citations. I also though, don't want, you know, the letters that they have sent in to go uncounted. And I know that they don't necessarily have the time to report every single time. I want them to feel like their concerns are being documented at the appropriate level and frequency. Because I don't think the question here, I think everyone has said, we understand those late nights are important to Dan as a business owner. This bar is important to the community. I think the question becomes documenting and having a good way to continue to work with Dan going forward to figure out an appropriate remedy if there needs to be one or if it's a more infrequent issue. Does that make sense? Whether there's a formal, a simple formal way to lodge a complaint so that we have a better tally of some kind.
Well, we do have a record of calls, which is like, which is a formal process into the marshal's office. And it sounds like we've had two, two, three of those in the last year, so.
But are those residents, I guess my question is, and that would be a whole different thing. Are they calling and they're like, I heard two in the last week and I'm annoyed? Is that two calls, is that one call? I guess that's what I'm, I'm kind of thinking.
Yeah, 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 I appreciate that.
I guess, you know, I think as we've sort of listened to all this, I think there's been a lot of really good points. You know, interestingly enough, one that I haven't really given a lot of thought to is, is the fact that as much as we would like Dan to control his clientele that are outside of his business, I think people have brought up the point that to some extent, he's really limiting his ability to do that. And I think he's taken some steps to try to do that. It sounds like he's going, working, he's going to work going forward in the future to try and mitigate that as much as possible. I also think that we've heard a preponderance of support for the, for the bar and not just from patrons, but from people that live in the neighborhood as well. So I think we would be really hard pressed to, one, not approve the license and to try to put any sort of conditions on it at this point, based on everything that's been presented.
I, I agree with you. I think Dan's going, you know, above and beyond trying to find ways to, you know, manage this thing without having to police the situation itself, which is not his responsibility. I want to point out a real quick analogy. I built a house that's 100 yards from the front high school. And from 8:00 AM until 3:45 PM, I hear the sound of 120 kids all day long. And that's just something I had to live with when I built that lot. It's, you know, I can't go to the. It's, you know, I can't go to the principal and say, could you have the kids be quiet all day long as they're coming and going to school? It's just part of living in a, in a town that has this level of density. And then not to, you know, undermine or negate the concerns of the residents that are having issues, but I think, you know, we're, we as a council and as a town staff, working with Dan to try to figure out ways to mitigate this is as much as we can do. So I'm in favor of moving forward with this license approval with the idea that we're gonna continue to work to try to solve this issue.
And I do want to say that one of, one of the letters we've had of complaint has been from the McKinneys. And Tom did weigh in today, you know, really in support of this business, you know?
Super cool.
It's not, yeah, it's not that our residents with complaints are anti-steps. And I just really want to emphasize that. So they're, they're just looking for ways to mitigate the effects to them. And, you know, I think it's really important that steps continue to try to be a good neighbor in return. You know, and it's just, like you said, Terry, just really continuing to work together for those solutions.
Okay, Shane, Shane, Marshal Shane wanted to weigh in. He's been very patient. Shane, you have something you want to add?
I just kind of wanted to clarify a couple of things. As of last month, we started Friday and Saturday nights working until 2:00. We moved the shifts around to adjust. So we will be policing town until 2:00 on those nights of the week. And also, just to clarify the complaints, we only had two people complaining in the neighborhood, but over the course of last summer, in fall, we received 10 complaints between the two, two people that were complaining in the neighborhood. And we tried to mitigate it. We also patrolled and tried to see if there was an issue, but, you know, it's very difficult to catch the exact time. So, but we did adjust our hours and I just wanted to clarify that, that we are taking steps to try and patrol later in the nights, on the busy nights of the week.
Great. Thanks Shane, thanks for that. Dan, you got one last comment?
Yeah, thank you. No, that all was great, actually. Shane, that's very informative and I can't wait to sit down and just, you know, further work with the marshals and to keep, you know, the repetitive offenders out, which is, it's kind of how my sign is worded as well. So if they're a repeat offender, they've got a warning, they've got four warnings when they walk out of the business and three on the sidewalk that tell them that if they're a repeat, you know, high volume noise offender, then they may not be allowed back into the tavern. So I really appreciate everybody's comments and I really appreciate town. It seems like we've come to some sort of, you know, I would call an agreement and just continue working, you know? It's a working agreement, I guess, I would call it. And I'm really appreciative of everybody's insight and just ready and willing to make whatever is left of our summer the bowl and then winter and beyond. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So that brings us to needing to take action on the renewal of the liquor license for Steps Tavern, either with conditions or not? Given, given all the input that we've had, I think, I think there's been a lot of good discussion. The fact that the marshal is gonna have some additional hours and coverage, I think is a good move. And given those things and not dissuading what the complainers have, but I think with the steps that Dan and company are making and that the marshal, I think we should go ahead and move to approve the liquor license with continued efforts by patrons, Dan and the town itself to try and mitigate issues where we can and, and continue to try and move forward with this.
I'll second that.
Nicely stated, Russ. Thank you. Motion's made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor's chief?
Aye.
Grambling?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Tyler?
I'm muted, aye.
Here for Tim Johnson?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Nice work, everybody. Thank you for all the very civil, respectful input. This was a great discussion and a great example of how Ridgway's community really tries to find common ground and work together for the best of the community. So thank you, one and all. And with that, we're gonna move on to the rest of our many remaining items. The next one being item number 17, resolution adopting water and sewer specifications and development standards. Joanne, are you taking that one or is that Chase?
I'm just, and then I'll probably hand it over to Joanne. But as, as directed by council, we, we looked over the document, you know, made various comments throughout it, changes that were made, tried to point out where things were moved and not changed. And also pointed out a few things that just remain the same as well. That's been out for almost two weeks now. We sent it out to individuals that expressed interest in it before, as well as some others that we knew had interest in the community, as well as posting it on our website. To date, I have not personally heard any, any comments on it. Not sure if anyone will come up tonight, but I'll let Joanne elaborate on some of that. She did most of the work here and was, worked very diligently to, to highlight and go through and put these comments in.
Great, thanks Joanne. Go ahead.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I think we went through each of the documents and went back to 1992 and the 2000 and the 2006 and tried to point out where we've made any changes with this one and how they might impact people. And I think I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Great, thanks Joanne. Anybody have any questions for either Chase or Joanne on this one? It's one of those cleanup house cleaning details that I think is, is well worth it and good to get done. Any comments in the audience? Any questions or comments? I see Alpine Planning. Is that Chris?
Yes, Your Honor, this is Chris Hawkins. Thank you. First, thank you for the explanations of the changes that made it so much easier to review and understand. I really appreciate that transparency. My only question is regarding oversizing of utility lines and infrastructure for development on the other side, is if the standards and specifications could set forth a provision that allows for cost reimbursement agreements? When you do have to provide the added costs for development. That way, if you have to provide an oversized wireline, sewer line, road or whatever, you're not paying for someone else's development and then you can get the cost back as a developer to future date. I have seen these in a few examples in some jurisdictions I work in. I've actually looked at some parcels for clients that have those types of agreements in place already too. So that's my only comment and thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Anybody else have any questions or comments for staff or somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 20-06, resolution the town council of the town of Ridgway, Colorado, running the town of Ridgway standard specification and typical drawings for infrastructure construction.
All right, was that Tessa?
Yes.
A motion's been made by Eric, seconded by Tessa. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor's chief?
Aye.
Gordon Leggy?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Here for Tim Johnson?
Aye.
All right, he passes unanimously. Thank you. That moves us on to item number 18. Review of, review and discussion of opportunity for alignment of South and North Railroad streets. For those of you who are new to council, this is a discussion that's been going on for decades and always been something that we hope could make happen because of the, the odd misalignment of North and South Railroad. But I'll let, I'll let Jay take it from here.
Yeah, thanks, John. This, I tried to summarize it here, but I also haven't been here for all of these discussions. So feel free to chime in for those of you who have been here before if I'm missing some points or miss quoting stuff that I thought I heard. Basically, the, the story here is that we've had a recent opportunity to kind of work with realigning North Railroad and South Railroad across Sherman Street with the cohousing development that is happening at the Warlick property. That's the property kind of across the street from the coffee shop and it goes all the way down south of the Chepita Hot Springs or Solar Springs Resort. It's kind of a long linear strip of property. And we've gone through a number of different things here. So as I understand, one of the original ideas or goals was to kind of make a South Railroad go all the way through to County Road 23 so that you didn't have to go on Lena Street to get over to County Road 23. And that, as I understood, was to kind of make more of a arterial in town, a little bit like North Railroad is on the north side of our town. You can get through, the speed's a little bit faster, you can just travel more easily. And, and the same, I think, was the goal for connecting South Railroad with County Road 23. There'd be another kind of main entry and exit on the south side of town. That then came Ramp, the Ramp project, and there was a goal, it's the second map in the staff report. There, the part of the ramp plans early on was to realign North Railroad with South Railroad, basically curving in North Railroad to cut through what was tennis courts, what is now a parking lot, and align with South Railroad. My understanding of what couldn't happen there is CDOT found some old documents that basically said that park can't be used as a road and we can't do that, so it didn't happen. Well, the cohousing project started and their development plan did not include kind of cutting through South Railroad all the way to County Road 23. With their cohousing development, they want, you know, their housing all clustered, their parking on the end, so cutting a road through there just didn't make sense. They also weren't doing planned unit development, so there's only limited, you know, kind of negotiating power with the town. But they were very generous and said, hey, let's, let's have this conversation. We're willing to talk about realignment on the very north end of our piece of property, that piece along Sherman Street. So all that to say, you know, this intersection still remains a bit troublesome. I'm sure everyone has experienced it where, you know, two cars get in the center turn lane going head on, trying to make left-hand turns and it's not, it's not safe. Luckily, we're a slow road there and the few times that I've been in that situation, it's been avoided pretty easily. But not a great situation still. So in mid-2018, council had a workshop to discuss different options. And our town engineer put together some options on what this might look like. We looked at, I think, four different options with the development team to see what, what this, how it might work based on how they wanted to develop, what they wanted to do, and based on the town's goals. You know, what, what did we really want for traffic flow and all of that? At the end of that meeting, the, the quick summary of it was, you know, none of the options really presented an opportunity to achieve the initial goals that were really desired with that realignment. A few, but not all of them. And then the cohousing group, you know, wanted to be sure to use as, kind of as little land of theirs as possible because they needed it for their development proposal. So we kind of landed on a spot where they can continue their development and, and they have, which is great. But we're at a spot now of really needing to kind of sort this through. What was the kind of finale of that 2018 workshop was, okay, we've kind of decided on a layout here where the, what's an alley behind Alpine Bank? Everyone thinks that belongs to Alpine Bank because people turn in there to use their one-way drive-through, but that is a public alley. It's owned by the town of Ridgway. That alley will be cut through with the cohousing development. So the cohousers are building a very short section of kind of a road to connect to that alley. And that will serve as kind of another connection point. They are gonna have a driveway from that alley south to access their property. So that piece is already set. However, the proposal that was agreed upon at the workshop was to basically bring another road straight south of North Railroad. Let me share my screen here. I think it might be easier to look at this than just talk about it. Let's see, can I zoom in to just this? So the proposal now is this map here that shows North Railroad could come down. And this, this is the new road that is to be built by cohousing already. And then this is the potential that we could build. So all of that to say, after kind of analyzing it, the, after the workshop, the town was to do a appraisal of that property to see what it would cost the town to acquire that piece of right-of-way to do that. Well, it didn't happen in 2019. It was part of our plan, but it didn't happen. It carried forward into this year's plan. And this is kind of our, our start of approaching it. As, as I started putting this together to get Preston up to speed on what was going on, it became clear to us that, okay, maybe it's not that we want to do the appraisal, but we want to revisit this with council and be sure that we're still on the right track here. After kind of weighing out the costs and benefits, I am not sure that this is really something that is worth considering any further. I am totally open for you guys to challenge that by all means. But I offered a list here in the staff report of different things that, that I kind of saw as I was thinking through this. One, you know, some of the original goals were creating an arterial, like really getting traffic to flow south. And with that curve in the street that would be pretty sharp, there's not much help to traffic flow. We wouldn't be creating a new arterial, we wouldn't be connecting straight to County Road 23. The existing awkward intersection would still exist. We'd just add another road to it, which I'm not sure would really help. The other thing is that CDOT has pretty clearly said that the existing South Railroad intersection with Sherman Street will be a limited access, meaning it will be right in and right out only, regardless of adding a new street or not. So I think the idea was, oh, if we realign it, we'll have a full access intersection close by. Well, we will and we would have that one just a little bit closer if we were to build that very short section of South Railroad. But we have a full access intersection at Lena. We now have a full access intersection at Liddell and it would connect through that kind of alley street that the cohousing group is building. I think, you know, we just kind of need to sort this out soon and what we're doing, the cohousing group may get to a point anyway where they want to market that property and sell it off and, and our opportunity might foreclose. So just something we need to kind of sort through. I was also thinking, boy, adding more road on that small piece of property would make a really awkward and small parcel that is left for development. And how productive would that be? And how much would that contribute to our, you know, vibrant, right downtown area? It feels like a not, yeah, not really great and productive use of, of property there. Budget concerns, of course, we would not only need to purchase... Budget concerns, of course, we would not only need to purchase the right-of-way from the cohousing group, but we would have to build, engineer a road, build a road and upkeep the road for the rest of time. And is it worth it for this small little section? I'm not sure. And then my favorite part was council's discussion about the oblong about.
I so appreciated that, Shay.
Well, it was such a fun idea. It really stuck in my head and, you know, the idea that one day, maybe I have, I mean, this is pretty far off, that that would create, there would be kind of a roundabout, but it's not really going to be round. It's going to be oblong. And that would help traffic flow in that area. And if we add this little road to our road inventory now, I feel like it's going to become useless if we ever do this oblong about. It will be some kind of weird exit or entrance that is not necessary and just adds another spoke to that, that, you know, people already have a hard time navigating those. So those were all of my thoughts. Again, really do challenge me. I just wanted to present this to you guys and get some direction moving forward. If we're interested in kind of investigating this further or if we're ready to say, hey, this is not something we're interested in, but just kind of need direction from you all on this topic tonight.
So my two cents is that connecting North and South is probably not going to be an easy thing to do. The biggest problem I see with the intersection there between North and South right now is accessibility. The head-ons that you talked about as you're trying to get to, to North Railroad or to South Railroad. And then, and then this right-in, right-out on the South Railroad bit. I don't know what the actual cost involved would be, but the best solution to me is the oblong about, not any other streets. I don't know that we've actually got the money to do that, but that would be the best thing. And I think that would address all the traffic issues that we're dealing with right now.
Well, and Russ, we can totally accept from the CDOT, I mean, it's not ideal for the coffee shop, but I mean, you, we can take the right-in, right-out on South Railroad if we're forced into. But I do think that trucks can't, I mean, it's what Shay was pointing out, the trucks making the turn onto this little spur extension of North Railroad doesn't actually solve our problem. It gives us a temporary solution if CDOT says right-in, right-out of South Railroad only. But then we put money into constructing that rather than funds to try to kick something into CDOT for a better solution.
I mean, you could build that the same way they did the one in Telluride where there's a bypass on the, on the roundabout. There's the one just outside of Telluride there.
Yeah, if you have the space.
So your trucks could essentially go in and out without having to hit the road.
Right, right. No, I'm talking about the little road that we were talking about.
Yeah, I don't see any, any benefit to adding the little road at all, myself.
Yeah, I'm ready to let it go as well.
Shay, this is terrible. You know, in my other capacity, I'm dealing with the developers there for Alpen Globe. From a utility perspective, does anything that you're proposing change their master layout plan? I'm looking at some of their drawings that I have and I'm wondering.
It doesn't. Yeah, that council workshop, we had basically kind of drawn a line at that alley behind Alpine Bank, straight west and said, okay, you guys are doing your development plan south of that. They, that lot to the north, they have, they plan to sell off separately anyway. And they wanted to be sure to, you know, offer that to the town and for us to have this option before they put it on the market for, you know, some commercial person to, to build something there.
Because, because they refer in their master plan to South Railroad street flow. I'm just wondering if that's changed any, doesn't, I guess you're saying it doesn't change?
Well, it shouldn't change anything.
Because Shay, they're building the east-west road anyway, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So you can bypass that whole intersection by going straight and going onto Liddell Street and going out that way if that's what you need to do without us purchasing.
Behind the bank, behind the bank there.
So are they, are they going to widen that?
Yeah, it's pretty narrow. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty much an alley right now.
To be able to create one-way traffic? Is that going to be a one-way in, one-way out?
Yes. So actually, that alley is a 20-foot wide right-of-way. They, the cohousing group is not, with their development plan, the width of the existing alleyway and Alpine Bank and the nursery is not going to change. But the right-of-way that they are dedicating to town is wider than that. I forget the exact number, but I think we had that discussion in depth at Planning Commission that they need access from a street so they couldn't build a 16-foot wide alley. They needed like a 24-foot right-of-way. So it will be wider on that cohousing side, but not change that Alpine Bank side.
That's going to be awkward, I think.
I agree. I agree. I, I mean, I got to say, I'm, as the old dog here on the block, this is something that I've wanted to see happen for decades and decades, that alignment of Railroad Street. My dream all along, early on, was to have it go straight across from Railroad on the north to the south and actually sort of somehow go straight through the Warlick property, the, the cohousing property, maybe meander a little bit and then connect to 23 and have, have that become an actual arterial. That's obviously not going to happen now, but boy, I, I sure would like to see us align it, even if it isn't ideal. I just think the right-in, right-out stuff, I mean, any of you pay attention to the supposed right-in and right-out of things like the alley at Mountain Market by the ice cream store? Nobody pays any attention to that. You know, it's just, it's just going to be an accident. So I'd sure like to continue to try and figure out how to make it happen. I, to me, that summary of this piece that I thank Shane for putting together, because the budgetary challenges, that's the thing that makes it hard just to imagine doing. I don't think we have to, even if we can come up with the money to buy the right-of-way, we don't necessarily have to develop it right away. Especially if they're committing to develop their bit that runs east-south. I mean, north-south, east-west, I'm sorry, it's getting late. But I agree that that's, there's a big problem in that that leads to an alley, Campbell Lane, I think it's actually called, that goes past the bank and between the bank and the Garden Center. That's not, that's not adequate. That's, that's not a road that we can count on for, for regular traffic flow. You know, the, the problem with this through the decades is Eric will testify, it's just the solution that was like, oh yeah, that makes sense. Let's do that. There's always some challenges. There's always been some that didn't quite work. So I continue to feel like I'm not sure what the answer is, but I sure hate to see us abandon the, the concept at all.
Well, Alpen Globe is pretty far along with their development plans. I don't see them changing, you know, a straight throughput. They, they still have things going around past the Simron or, or Blacks and all that.
Well, I think they've made it pretty clear early on that they were not interested in trying to connect a road all the way through to County Road 23.
It would consume a number of their sellable lots. That's the problem.
Oh, that's a tough one.
Well, haven't we already approved their plot as is?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's a done deal.
It would be whatever we could do with that little chunk of commercial property on the north end. You know, if it looked like we could afford to purchase the property or, or the right-of-way and just put this on hold for the future, that, depending on what the fiscal impact of that was, that makes some sense. And nothing else, the property could end up being an investment item for the town. Nothing down the road.
Yeah, it won't lose value.
How was my thinking?
But I would also say that in, in terms of the right-in, right-out, if it's onto a highway, CDOT's going to do one of those six-inch concrete curb things. It's not going to be, I don't think it would be quite, I think they would expect us to actually for real limit that one rather than just a nice, kind suggestion of a sign.
Well, it's not, there's not going to be, it's not a, it's not a we. CDOT's going to do what they want to.
Right, I'm saying CDOT would require, CDOT would require it to be for real, right-in, right-out.
But that, that's their highway. So they're going to do what they want.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that they're going to put in a, an island in the neighborhood?
Yeah, it could be an island, you know, fill in that, that turn lane there. I mean, if they really want it to be right-in, right-out because they're concerned about an accident, it's not going to be a six-inch sign like at Mountain Market that says, go right. If they're really worried about avoiding collision, they're.
I find it hard to imagine them finding the money to do that.
Maybe.
If it's helpful, what I've kind of heard, not like in writing or anything from CDOT, was our access permits right now for the cohousing development have permitted this realignment, but they would limit the existing to right-in and right-out and it said signage only.
Oh, really?
My understanding is that if there were accidents or if it became a problem, they could actually require that the town put in the medians or do something to prevent that, even though it's their highway. So I'm not sure how true that is, but just what I have heard and thought was very interesting.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Is, is the right-in, right-out only applied to South Railroad?
Right, Russ. So basically, what CDOT has said right now is if we add that new little piece of, of South Railroad that aligns perfectly with North Railroad, they would restrict the existing South Railroad intersection to right-in and right-out only. I have also been told that if we don't put that little section of Railroad aligning with North Railroad, they will still restrict the existing South Railroad to right-in and right-out only.
The biggest concern for me is the traffic flow in that area. We're both coming off of North Railroad, more so than south. And something, again, I go back to the traffic circle, if you will. I think that's the right answer. That's going to help that whole area and potentially help slow down some traffic where you've got those two crosswalks that go across to the ice cream shop and then further up at the sporting goods in the Mountain Market.
I agree with you, Russ. I've spent like seven, eight minutes sitting at that North Railroad intersection waiting to turn on or either, either direction. It's just a big traffic jam right there.
If you add a road, there's going to be more people turning and doing stuff right there.
Yeah, it's going to pollute it.
Well, that was the other reason the oblong about came up, up in the beginning was we don't have any lights in Ridgeway. We don't really want to do a light because we only need that traffic control at certain points during the day. So the oblong about kind of helps do some traffic calming and spacing when you need it, but also not stop you when it's mid-afternoon.
Well, Tessa and John, the Planning Commission, they need to create the Ridgeway Beltway. Since you can beat the whole town.
Yeah. I feel like, I mean, for me, the question is like, if we do try to work with CDOT to do some kind of irregular roundabout, roundabout solution here, would we need to own that land? And would we be unable to do it if we did not own that land? Because for me, the, adding the little snippet that connects to Campbell Lane on the south side is kind of a nonstarter. I just feel like it could be like an already complicated situation. Like I think it makes it worse and it sounds expensive. But if we can, like, I, I appreciate that this issue is not going anywhere and that we want to keep our options open. And so I am curious about whether it behooves us to buy the land either as a way of fixing this down the road or of, as an investment in general. I mean, I don't know how much land costs.
A lot.
Well, it's a great question, Tessa. I think one of the things, I think I was talking to Chase about was, he had kind of mentioned, well, jeez, if we want to do that oblong about, we would need to use some of that park property. And CDOT has clearly said that that park property cannot be used for roads when they told us that we couldn't realign North Railroad and move it over to angle it to hit South Railroad. So we both had a little concern that, gosh, the amount of area that you need to build those kinds of things, we might already be foreclosed on that. Not to be a downer. I don't, I haven't investigated that idea at all.
Well, okay, so with that being, with that being the case, are we then wedded eventually because of CDOT edict and space to eventually requiring South Railroad to be right-in, right-out and kind of realizing we may need to construct that section south of the highway to connect to North Railroad and have to build a median? I mean, like, if we don't do an oblong about, what is our actual kind of final solution versus we're building this until we decide what to do? Yeah, given the restrictions on the park property.
Yeah, we're really stuck with that.
Shay, have you actually broached the roundabout oblong about idea with anybody at CDOT?
I have not. Nope. I think I've only talked to Chase about it. I don't, Joanne might have some thoughts on it to put her on the spot, but she's, she's on and knows CDOT well.
I see Tom McKinney has his hands up. Tom?
Can you hear me, John?
Yep.
I, I just wanted to mention, I was involved in this about, I'm hearing some things that seem very strange and times may have changed an awful lot in 20 years, but nobody wanted the first stoplight that came to Ridgeway. Are you kidding me? Put a stoplight in this town? We wanted nothing to do with that. And it, I find it very funny. People on council saying, we don't want another stoplight. 20 years ago, when this was coming up, a couple of things were different. We had a transportation plan of which North and South Railroads were, I believe they're designated feeder streets, but they're the main arterials. If you were coming in to Ridgeway and you wanted to go north or south, you were going to go on Railroad Street. And, and when Tom Warlick first developed his property, the town asked him to straighten the road and he in fact did do it. It did go down and run into 23 as part of his PUD that never, never went to fruition. The main point I'm trying to make is before you guys have all this discussion of what you'd like, unless things have totally changed, 20 years ago, they also told us that the next stoplight in, in Ridgeway, Colorado would be Railroad. And they said, if we don't have it aligned, we'll have to pay for one complete set of lights for that in, intersection. And they gave us a price at the time, which I forgot. Just saying, it might be smart to, to talk to CDOT and make not, sure that they're not saying something to the effect of, well, you've got two options and we won't consider anything else. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah.
I was going to say, I think our original reticence about stoplight and this discussion about oblong about came about because we're busy at certain points and then at other points, it's not busy at all. And then you're not dealing with a light in those points. I think that was part of our discussion.
But if you think about what Telluride did with that roundabout at Society Turn, CDOT wanted to just put a stoplight there. And Telluride didn't want it. So Telluride ended up paying for a really large percentage of the construction to that roundabout to avoid a stoplight.
to avoid a stoplight.
It is a nice roundabout.
It seems, seems successful.
Yeah.
That and the one right, right before town seemed successful as well.
Yep. Well, and just for whatever it's worth, Tom, my recollection is a little different with Warlick's property. He was willing to consider aligning railroad, but the bigger issues that stopped that were other neighboring property owners not wanting to have, like the coffee shop not wanting to have their street coming through next to their business anymore. And there was also a kind of a rogue lot behind, behind Lupita's building that made a big stink and didn't want to cooperate. So it was, it was more like a three or four way property owner dispute that kept that from happening. But it's neither here nor there at this point, anyway. So I guess that we, we still need to sort of make a recommendation to staff as to whether we think it's worth exploring the cost of, of buying that short section of right away from the cohousing people, whether or not we develop it right away. I guess I would say I'm still in favor of that if we can pull it off, given budgetary constraints and everything else we're challenged, challenged with right now, maybe that's not, maybe it's possible.
I mean, are we talking about getting, actually having the appraisal done? And then we're going to have another discussion about how to respond to that appraisal, correct?
I think that's one of the options that could be done. I, I feel like there's a number of ways we could go with this. It could just be, you know, we're done altogether and we don't want to investigate it more. It could be, let's move forward with the appraisal at least, and we'll have another discussion. It could be, let's have a workshop and think through, you know, get out maps at some point when we can meet virtually or do the board on, on Zoom here and brainstorm more about other things to do. I'm sure there's other options in there as well.
Well, it seems the cost of the appraisal is fairly low risk way of making an informed decision.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of a combo of pieces two and three of that where we do an appraisal so we know what we're talking about for this option on the table right now with cohousing, but also have a concerted, longer form discussion about that super important intersection area in town.
And wouldn't there also some comments about following up at CDOT and, and looking at the possibility of actually putting in some form a roundabout?
Yeah, that could be maybe part of leading into that workshop so we are formed to have a discussion.
Yeah, good, good. Fully what our options are there.
And I think part of getting the appraisal as opposed to just the right away is probably, particularly if we're talking around about it or oblong about it or whatever else. Somebody mentioned, I can't remember now, that we would probably need that piece, that whole piece of property to make that even work. So we should probably even look at just what it would cost to purchase that whole chunk of property. So we have our options open.
Can the appraisal, can the appraisal be done for both, both pieces? Two part?
Meaning just the right of way or the full property?
Both? I mean, can, can we, can we pay to appraise both options?
I'm sure we can.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't recall exactly what we have in the budget for this. It might, the, the budget was to just get an appraisal for the right of way portion. So I don't know if that would cost more. I assume it would. But we could see what our options are with the budget that we have established already.
Well, more information, the better. Make a decision, I guess. If we can afford it.
And I, I feel like it was somewhere around $5,000. I don't know if Pam just recalls all budget items off the top of her head, but.
Commercial appraisals are big.
I mean, it's a, it's a decent chunk of money to just get that information. I think that's why I wanted to come to you guys and, and ask the question before moving forward.
It's a decent chunk of money to just get information. However, I keep coming back to that's, that is in the middle of that, you know, if you're coming from 550, that's the first intersection you run into in town. And there's businesses off of it and, you know, that, it is a import, major import to town.
I'm not sure. So the, sorry, Tessa.
I'm not sure we can fix it. I just feel like if we can't build on the parkland and we, I mean, I guess we could curve South Railroad and cut across the entire property, maybe. And do like a soft curve instead of a hard curve.
That was part of the original thought.
But I don't know how that would work with that Campbell Lane alleyway that Alpenglow is building. Like I just, yeah, I guess I appreciate what she is saying here, which is like, I don't know if we want to put more money into this, like.
But if we, if we create a soft curve, can town decommission the land where rail, South Railroad comes out right now? And then do we have another commercial sellable lot? Like, those are the type of questions that it's like, we, I don't know.
Yeah, that's tough.
I don't know if it's helpful, the Creamery, the building right next door is probably roughly the same size property. Chase just sent me this info. It's for sale for $550,000.
I think it's time to go eminent domain.
Terry, don't make me go over there.
That price on the dairy is actually down about 50 grand from where they started. They started at 699, I think.
Yeah. Well, I feel like I'm hearing some consensus on perhaps doing an appraisal for the full property and the right of way and continuing to discuss.
Can you put the appraisal out to bid? Does that help any? Or is it, is that a silly exercise?
We have to follow our procurement policies.
Which I'm not familiar with, sorry.
Yeah, no worries. But well, depending on the price, Terry, is why I say that. You know, how much they cost, what we'll have to do.
No matter what. All right. So do we need formal action on this, Shay?
Um, I didn't think so, but as long as I got that summary right, or a summary from you there.
I think that, I think what you said was a pretty correct interpretation of the consensus. Okay?
Felt a little mixed, so I wasn't sure. I don't want to, I'm not comfortable speaking for you all.
Well.
It's, it's mixed. Yeah.
Pam, was that you?
I said I can address what their consensus was. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Their consensus was to get an appraisal for both the right of way and the parcel, to have a longer discussion regarding the intersection and staff to talk to CDOT regarding a roundabout.
Nicely done.
Pam, you're so good.
That was good.
Sharp at almost 10:00 PM. I dig it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Shay. Okay, so I believe that takes us to
19.
Number 19, mid-year update on the 2020 fiscal year budget. Pam?
Well, this is based on your discussion at the April meeting when we talked about the uncertainty of COVID. And we looked at the list of major expenditures that we use within the treasurer's department. Went through that list and staff was directed to freeze a number of those items and then to use discretion when purchasing or, or services to deem that they were essential and also necessary. This, at that time, staff was asked to come back with an update at the July meeting and that's what this is. But I thought since we were doing that, we might as well just do a mid-year overview of the 2020 budget. So as far as the big question, the town's financial condition is in good shape. We're similar to where we were last year, including our revenues. We have taken an extremely conservative approach to expenditures this year and we, we are planning to continue to do that. But I have given you a number of reports if you want to review them together, or if you have any questions, if you've already reviewed them on your own. I hoped that I did a good job of laying out what the reports were so that you could read them and understand them, because I know if you're not used to these, they can be confusing. Do you want me to go through the reports? Okay.
Anybody having questions right off the bat for Pam?
Is there just a, a general recommendation based upon the details in the reports or should we go through them line by line?
No, I don't think you need to go through them line by line. And there's really, what the council had asked was to come back and give you an update on where we were. And I can tell you that our financial condition is good. It, we're similar to where we were last year. Our revenue base is solid and we're under expending. So that means we're even coming out more of a conservative take as we look at the year end. If things continue as they are now, which I don't see any reason why they won't be. Perhaps the fall may be less than last year, but all of that's unknown at this time. I, I, I don't have a recommendation that we need to do anything really, except to continue on in the conservative approach that we're already taking.
So, so based on the current situation, the current condition, were there any particular cuts that we adopted that you would suggest that we are, can be more liberal in putting back into the budget?
No, you know, really, that, some of those things that we froze are items that we really don't need to do this year, like the purchasing the water truck. I did talk to the public works department about that. They said they were fine with that, looking at that next year. I would say the one thing would probably be the water fund. Council didn't freeze anything there. They left that to the discretion of staff, but I think that we really need to, if there are anything in the water fund that needs to be replaced or fixed, those allocations do need to be made because we need to continue to operate that efficiently and safely.
I think that's why council had said with water and probably, I don't remember what we said with respect to sewer, but that's why we said staff discretion was, if it really needs to be done, we count on you guys to decide to do it.
Right. And, and I would say we would continue that again. As I said, we're taking it in a very conservative approach and will continue to do that. Maybe I should just go through the reports then. So that's just really quick, if you have any questions. The sales tax comparison from 2019 to 2020, January through May, we are up 7% from 2019 at this point. So we look really good in our sales tax receipts. Of course, let's see, let me, let me look at these things. Oh, we haven't even entered into our strongest time of year, which is our strongest sales tax months are June, December, sometimes October, depending on the year. So that is the first report. It's called sales tax comparison. And you can see those numbers yourself. Shows the year, 2019, next to it is 2020. And then over to the side, there's the percentage of change that happened within that year. So the sales tax is on your left, food for home consumption is on your right. Food for home consumption is shown separately because those taxes were placed by a voter, by the voters, and we have to track them separately. So are there any questions on that?
So, so was there a year to date roll up or these are just by, by these monthly periods?
Our year to date, we're up 7% over last year.
That's what I thought I heard you say. Thank you.
So the next sheet is something that I don't usually give to council, but I thought since the situation that we're in, you might want to just see where the town's reserves are. We, you can see where we hold our reserves, how much we're holding in the water fund, the sewer fund, the general fund. There's a number of holding accounts for the general fund. We, our reserves and what we are holding in savings accounts looks really good. So I've showed you both the reserves, which are like savings and the operating accounts, which is the funds that we're actually working with in right now. Are there any questions on that? Okay, the next sheet is, I've given you two sheets, one for the general fund. It's called admin budget versus actual. And then there's another for the water and sewer funds combined. Those include both revenues and expenditures. So you'll see them called income and expense accounts. Again, these are showing you where they are in relation to what the budget was. So this is through the end of June. So under the admin budget versus actual, on the first page, the very first line item is property tax. And you can see that right now, and this would be January through May, we are at 67% of what we've estimated our budget to be for the total year. And again, we haven't even gotten into our months that are historically our largest sales tax months. Some of these receivable accounts, we're only showing five months of receipts right now because we don't receive funds. They don't fall, always follow within a calendar month for receipts, especially when they're coming from the state. So I just marked those in red so you can see when you're looking at the percentage that we're really talking five months versus six months, that the rest of the line items are for, are at six months. Overall, seeing notes here.
So separate from the five month periods, anything over 50% is, is a bonus?
Well, maybe. Depends on the month and what the line item is, because some months we're not expending everything the same or receiving everything, everything the same. I, again, with the property, I mean, excuse me, the sales tax, we are at 40, 34% with our lowest months. I, I said that incorrectly before. I was referring to property tax, I meant sales tax. We were, we are at our lowest, we have not gone into highest months of receipts yet. So you can't really say, oh, everything should be 50. Maybe things like telephone and things that are pretty consistent. The water and sewer fund sheet, the revenues of for water and sewer are only for the first five months. That's because the water billing hasn't been run yet and those reports weren't in this. this run on the budget versus actual. But we are at a similar place where we were in 2019 in those service charges. Again, water will be higher in the summer months, usually sewer also because of the restaurants operating at a higher capacity during the summer months also. One thing that I did want to point out in the water and sewer funds is when you look at the overall numbers, we are, we did include tap fees within water and sewer in their revenue sections, which may not be purchased this year. Those were just estimates based on proposed developments. And again, that's a complete unknown. We do have capital projects that are contained in those budgets and in within the water fund, there was $250,000 budgeted for the Lakewood Capital Project, which won't happen this year. So that helps to, to skew those numbers when you're looking at bottom line numbers. So if you're looking at the bottom line in the general fund, revenues are with some of these revenues being at five months, not six, is that 40, or excuse me, 46%. And expenditures in the general fund as of the end of June are at, the total expenditures are at 35% year to date. Water and sewer funds, the water, again, it's, this number is skewed because it's five months. Water revenues are at 26%. And again, you have to take into account that there's that $100,000 in tap fees and the $210,000 in the grant that's not going to be expended and also shown is in the revenues. Sewer, the same thing, again, the sewer service charges is only five months. And again, those tap fees at $100,000 are, are shown there in those numbers. So you can't say, oh, it's 26% and it should be 50 at this point because there's other things that play into that. Our expenditures overall in the water and sewer funds though are, um, the total, it's not, there's, I'm sorry, there's not a full total. But you can see the numbers, the percentages, the expenditures are very low year to date out of water and sewer both. I really don't think there's any need to, for council to look at items and discuss freezing anything.
I have a quick question, going back to admin budget versus actual, because we're in pretty good shape and in light of the discussion today on other issues surrounding law enforcement, looking at those particular light items, you know, with both capital expenses and regular expenses, is there any reason to take advantage of our good situation to put line items back in the budget? For example, vehicles or anything of that nature? Is there any reason to look at that? And I'm not trying to micromanage any of this, of course, but, but because we're in good shape, are we, are we hurting in that area? Is that an area that Shane would pine on and say, hey, you know, if we're in good shape, I'd like to put the vehicle back in the budget or something of that nature?
Preston and I have discussed this and we really do want to take a conservative approach. So I do not think from our discussions that that's something we're looking at right now is putting any of those items that we put a freeze on earlier. If we find that we do that, we will definitely come to council. But at this point, I don't believe, Preston, you can tell me if I'm wrong. I don't believe that's what we're asking.
I think, yeah, this is Preston. Pam, great presentation and I think you're kind of spot on with how you're characterizing it. It, council, it's your prerogative to, I mean, if you want to go line item by line item and revisit some of the, the specific programs, projects, initiatives that back in April, council said, you know what, let's hold on this, let's give staff discretion to figure out how to move forward on stuff like this. You know, we can certainly take it like that. I will unmute Shane and I'm 247% sure that if you ask him if he needs a new patrol vehicle, I know what his answer is going to be. So yeah, there's, there's certainly stuff that here as staff, we need to further evaluate and figure out what the needs are versus what, what the wants are and based on what we have in the procurement policy and move forward in an, in an appropriate way. So, uh, you know, Pam and I will sit with Shane here and, and others, you know, Mike with the water truck, there's some other large ticket items that we'll need to have some pretty strategic conversations around to figure out what we need again versus what, what might be able to hold till the next fiscal year. So sorry to be kind of all over the place, but there's mechanisms and avenues for us to figure out how to, how to move forward with stuff. And again, the procurement policy we have in place is great. So if, if there is a determination that we do need the new patrol vehicle or the new water truck, that'll end up having to go before council at some point. That's just an example. Shane, unmute you.
Can everybody hear me? So, you know, Preston's right in the aspect of, you know, knowing what my answer would be, but just a little feedback I'd like to put in there. You know, we have two fairly new patrol cars and then we have one that's, you know, up around the 90,000 mile mark that was purchased in 2014. And we don't have a backup at this point. And one of the issues that, that concerns me is if one of the cars were to go down for some issue, we don't have a backup. So we would be basically hot seating a car where it was running, you know, two shifts a day. Right now we're running three cars to cover seven days a week. So, you know, a couple of the cars put on a lot more miles with that. So, you know, my answer is, could we get by? Yes, we can get by another year barring some major issue with one of the cars. Also, one other concern of mine is like the, the hybrid fusion that we have has very expensive batteries in it and they, we've already replaced them once in the car, which was an $8,000 hit to the budget. And they have the potential of, you know, needing replaced at different times in intervals and that is the one that has the highest miles on it. So that, that's my input on it. Could we get by? Yes, we can get by, but is it prudent to wait and then have an issue where we're having to run cars more than we would normally run them? Or also, you know, high maintenance issues start coming up on the cars. So the other two we have are right around the 40,000 to 50,000 mile mark already. So that's just my input on it. And, you know, I appreciate whatever you guys decide on it. But, you know, my recommendation would be to get one now so that we, you know, have that backup in case we start having issues. But I'll try and be brief. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks Shane. This is Preston again. Well, I hope you don't, didn't mind my, my joke, but I was spot on with your answers. So there was that. But that's just an example. You don't always want to try to get by, you know, Shane, I'll use your words. We really do need to evaluate what's the cost effectiveness of purchasing a new vehicle versus get, trying to, trying to make it through with, you know, the, the regular wear and tear on these vehicles. That's something that's always got to be at our forefront and in evaluating this stuff. So that's kind of, that's the point I was trying to make earlier. It's not just, I mean, we're talking about a police vehicle here, but there's a ton of other stuff in the budget that we need to go, that we need to have like this thought process for. So those are, that's my two cents.
Well, thanks, thanks to everybody for answering that. My, my reason for asking, of course, is that when we made those cuts, we were projecting what might happen three months down the line. And now we know a little more about what is happening. So I want to give you deference and making adjustments if you needed it.
But I also think it's important to keep in mind what might happen three months down the road. So I, I think, I appreciate Preston, kind of the chart, the path you're charting here, which is let's still be conservative, but kind of maybe now that it's a little less panicky than it felt in April, evaluate these purchases on a kind of case by case basis.
Well, I'd like to address that.
Okay. Yeah.
That is actually our discussion and our, our feeling on this as far as continuing to be as conservative as we've been, based on the fact as always, no one knows what the economy is going to do. And just taking that approach right now, we need to see what's going to happen.
Yeah, Pam, I was trying to amplify and say, I really appreciate what you and Preston were doing. I think it really makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
You know, I think as we go forward and, you know, maybe we look at some of those items like the patrol car and stuff, maybe what needs to happen is that Preston, department heads need to sort of look at those things critically and go, okay, you know, what, you know, what are we going to do if such and such piece of equipment breaks without a backup? You know, patrol car goes down, then we're going to be scrambling to expend that money to try and get them something, you know? And it's just not a quick process to buy a car, to get a patrol car, because by the time you get them all fitted with everything in there, it just seems to take a while. Maybe just come back with a recommendation that, okay, some of these are some items that we, we may just want to pull the trigger on with your consent. That make sense?
It does. That's helpful. Uh, yeah, I mean, we could circle around, uh, you know, like I was talking to you before, again, I don't want to get long winded, but yeah, we'll, we're coming into budget season. We're going to take a hard look, not only at, in, in preparing for 2021, but what's going on in 2020, just like Pam and I undertook to get ready for this evening. And, and we'll figure out what we, what the needs are versus the wants and we can circle around and let you all know, Eric, if I, if I'm misunderstanding, let me know, but let, let you all know what we're recommending that we need to move forward with here in the short term.
That's exactly what I was.
Okay.
Well, and just to be clear, I applaud your efforts for being conservative and being diligent on this and there was no attempt to micromanage. Just wanted to give you the ability to adjust if, if necessary.
Pam doesn't even let me buy paper clips.
That's because we already have like 10 billion of them.
She knows, because she knows.
Well, I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this.
And they probably come from China.
It's really good to know where we are and especially with this, with the COVID that's come through and, and seeing how it's actually impacting at the end of the day. So I appreciate the numbers and I think I agree with Eric's approach that if there's some things we need to move forward, let's, let's start looking at that and, and bring it up to council on, on things that would be prudent in, in your opinion to move forward with.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Russ. And I just want to say huge thanks to Pam for getting all the materials ready for the meeting. So.
That's really nice to see us in a, in a year over year place like this and it gives me comfort, but I also appreciate that the future is uncertain and I, I agree with your take, so.
Nice surprise.
All right.
The mayor disappeared.
It appears that way.
I know. Well, then I'll go ahead and move us on to, are we done with that, do you think?
Yeah, Eric, I think we have.
I'm here.
What, what we need.
You're back.
Unless there's any other specific direction or, you know, other conversations council wants to have, I think Pam and I have what we need.
Yeah. I was here all along. I just turned off my video.
Oh. Maybe you're grabbing a quick cat nap.
I could use one, but no. So, yeah, so you've got the direction you need, Preston?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right.
Pam, are you, are you, did you hear what you, do you have what you need? Sorry, I just want to make sure you're cool.
Thank you, Preston. No, yes, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. So let's burn through these last items to the heat we can. Item number 20, confirmation of amendment of emergency restrictions promulgated by the town manager on the burning of fires, on burning and fires within the town of Ridgeway.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, last week we followed the lead of Yarra County in implementing stage one fire restrictions. The code allows the town manager to promulgate the restrictions. Council just has to confirm or amend them. So that's why we're here. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. John Countryman. There seems to be a discrepancy in the restrictions that were promulgated last week by, by me. It seems to me that there might be a couple restrictions that fall under the stage two category, which was why John had contacted me. So let me give him a shout out. The intent was to mirror Yarra County in the stage one restrictions. That was the intent. So I think, and I'll, I'll look to Bo, you know, Bo's still on. Do you recommend that the council just amend what's currently in place to match Yarra County?
Yeah, certainly. That would be my recommendation. The council can be more restrictive. I don't think that they want to be, but it would just to mirror the stage one fire restrictions as issued by Yarra County.
Thanks for that, Bo. Yeah, again, sorry, I should have said that. The town could certainly be, or the council could certainly be more restrictive if you all want to, but the intent last week was to match the county though.
Which are the items that are more restrictive on this, Preston?
Oh, should have known y'all were going to ask that. Let me see if I can bring it up.
I think it's tires. Because stage two allows for, or sorry, stage one allows for fire in a metal container, I think.
Well, there's, there's the one that came up earlier, smoking accepted in enclosed vehicle or building. That would solve the issue behind steps.
Here, I have it here if, if you guys are ready.
Go for it.
So cooking on a manufactured charcoal liquid fuel or propane gas grill is allowed. Campfires that do not exceed two feet in height in prefabricated concrete or metal enclosures. Fires in chimenea or manufactured enclosures on private property are the restrictions that are allowed under stage one.
Thank you.
Do we need a move? Do we need a movement?
A motion.
No, there was an ordinance that the council adopted in 2018 that gives the town manager the authority to adopt these regulations. It would just be direction that Preston's looking for in terms of if you wanted to override his decision or be more restrictive.
You did good, Preston.
All good.
Yep.
Well, it was a good go, but it wasn't perfect. That's the point. So, uh, so. That's the point. So, uh, so Bo, you're saying if they just, uh, provide direction to amend what's currently in place to run with the county has in place?
That's correct.
Yes.
And I'm seeing a bunch of heads nodding.
Verbal confirmation.
We have what we need, everybody. Thank you.
Consensus. All right, thank you.
Give me the thumbs up.
Item number 21, resolution adopting the updated Colorado Communities for Climate Action Policy Statement for 2021.
Councilmember Lakin, would you like to present this item?
You skipped one. Were we supposed? Oh, no, that was it. Just kidding. Okay.
She had to finish her mouth.
Sorry, I, were you eating? I'm sorry about that.
My mom made me a plate. I'm eating. Um, so two weeks ago, I think, a little more, I spent all day on an online Zoom call for Colorado Communities for Climate Action. Was much for Greenland than last year. We have removed all the explanatory text, which was interesting and made for good discussions. But part of that came from getting buy-in from communities that are less able to approve pretty radical climate action. You guys, it's in the council packet. I know we have all been on here for a long time, so I won't go through it piece by piece. Preston summarized, um, some substantive changes that were made or some minor changes that were made from the draft that we looked at before I was in the conference. I just want to say, since we don't get a chance to talk about it very often, I'm really, really proud of Ridgeway for being a member of CC4CA. They're really trying to do that state level lobbying work for better climate policy in a way that we may not have the bandwidth to do and also using the power of the collective. Can't remember how many, um, communities they're up to. I want to say it's up to just over 30 now.
34, I think.
Yeah, that's what, that's the number that was coming to mind for me. So really looking at, there was a lot of discussion about inclusivity in terms of economic, racials, you know, gender, all of those things. There were really good discussions that happened. So, um, I recommend that Ridgeway approve this. I think it fits with a lot of our master plan goals for what we want for our community and getting that support we need from the state level to do it.
Great. Is there any other questions or comments for Beth or and or Preston on this? Or is there a motion to adopt a resolution updating Colorado Communities for Climate Change Policy Statement for 2021?
Don't move.
Nicely done. I think I heard Eric first. Uh, motion made by Tessa, seconded by Eric, and roll call vote, please.
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Geiler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Great. Hey, Beth.
Yeah.
When you talk to the CC4CA group again, will you ask them a question for me?
Sure.
Find out how many of the group, uh, use SIRSIA for their insurance?
Okay.
Because, um, I did a little research and SIRSIA, which I love, SIRSIA's a great group, but they are heavily invested in fossil fuels.
Oh, interesting. And I feel like I should just email Jacob. I feel like he would have a good idea on how that.
I actually reached out to Tammy Tanue. And I think I emailed another board member, um, about six months ago about this and just heard nothing back. I think they just were like, oh, we don't want to, we don't want to deal with this one. But, I mean, the more I keep reading, it's like, one of the most powerful things we can do is, is advocate for the, the entities we work with to divest themselves from investing in fossil fuels.
Yeah, that was a huge discussion about, um, divestment last year. And it was definitely touchy because, you know, in terms of, oh, so the policy number 29 discusses towns considering partial or full divestment. And so that's really interesting to bring up that municipal insurance angle of it because it certainly fits with, with that policy goal of theirs.
Yes, okay.
Cool.
Great, thanks. No, no, uh, enough said on that one, but it's, it's something I've been.
No, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah. All right, that brings us to, uh, item number 22, resolution establishing the Town of Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council. And I have to give a huge shout out to Preston for taking this on at my request earlier this year and, um, taking the bull by the horns and, and coming up with what you have before, before you right now. So I can't thank you enough, Preston.
Oh, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Uh, but, you know, council had already agreed to pursue the idea. So that was, had it already been set in motion, but glad you had, uh, brought it up to me. And this is just follow up from the last meeting. You all had given some direction on stuff like membership requirements, term of office, role and responsibilities, um, and specific goals of the program. Not a whole lot of, you know, specific changes or anything, just to talk through some of that stuff. The, the purpose, duties and procedures of what will be termed the Town of Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council, unless you all want to change that, um, it's in Exhibit A to the actual resolution. So hopefully you've had a chance to look through that. John, I'll ask, did you, I think we, I asked you last week, but have you heard back from anybody at the school?
Have not, other than I did reach out to Craig Spearman and he took me a little while to get, it took a little while to get back to me. Christmas, summer vacation and all, but he was very excited and he was going to, um, he was going to try to reach out to some students and, and see if he could find some interest. I have not heard back from him again, but in general, he was extremely supportive and thought it was a great, great thing we had in the works.
Great, great. So, um, you know, just in terms of some details, committees anticipated to, or the, the council, Youth Advisory Council, anticipated to meet, you know, once per month. Staff support, uh, you know, roughly estimated at eight to 16 hours per month to do things like noticing meetings, preparing, um, you know, information for the meeting, record keeping, uh, reporting recommendations to council, stuff like that. And if, if this ultimately goes through, uh, staff will plan to post a solicitation for interested students in, uh, and you all can help me with the timeframe if it doesn't sound, um, on point or accurate enough, but, uh, post something in late August with an application submitter deadline in late September. And then interviews and appointments, um, scheduled for council's regular meeting in October. That'd be October 14th. So, um, those are the ideas, those are the thoughts. Happy to answer any questions.
I like it.
Yeah, it looks awesome. And I do remember from when I was a reporter on the Montrose City Council that the youth council was like, they were cool. They had interesting perspectives and like, it was, I'm, I'm excited to see it in Ridgeway. So, awesome work.
Yeah, FYI, that, um, one of the real movers, takers in Montrose was Michaela Unruh, uh, who was born and raised up here, at least she may not have been born here, but she came with the Unruh's, her parents, early on, uh, and her parents still work at Ridgeway School. She went to Ridgeway School for a while, then went to Montrose School and then was there. Youth, uh, council down there. She's now an assistant, I think assistant city clerk for the city of Montrose. So she's, she's gone to college, come back and she's, she's one of those kids. It's like, she could be president one day. She's really great, really.
Michaela, Michaela graduated from Ridgeway.
Did she?
Mm-hmm. And I taught her at Ridgeway.
Great. Yeah, she, um, she kind of went back and forth for a while, it seemed like. But, yeah, her parents always both worked at the school, so that doesn't surprise me. Mallory taught her in middle school and loved her, so.
Didn't we give her a scholarship?
Uh, I believe so. She was an intern for a while. Yeah. All right, well.
I move to adopt resolution number 2009, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Ridgeway, Colorado, establishing the Town of Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council.
Second.
Ooh, quick on the draw.
It was me, Pam, just FYI.
I heard you. Did we lose John?
I guess. I'm going to do a roll call vote. How's that? Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Bramble.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Geiler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, we're, what's next?
All on you.
So next is item number 23, in order, I gotta make it bigger. In order extending, where is this? Uh, extending the declaration of local disaster in and for the Town of Ridgeway. This is just sort of a continuation of what we've done before. Preston, do you have any?
Uh, nothing to add. No, sir. It's the same as it ever was, recommending extending it to August 13th, uh, in line with what other communities and, you know, well, at least around the state are doing. And I imagine, you know, Bo and I will need to circle around and figure out how much longer, uh, this needs to be extended for, but I, I'm not aware of any communities, and maybe Bo, you are, uh, that are, or that have just kind of stopped the disaster declaration piece, if you will. Oh, go ahead, Bo.
There, there have been some in, in Delta that I'm aware of in terms of local, um, removals. But a-again, that was late May, early June, and things have changed since then, so.
Right, right. So, thanks, Bo.
Yeah, it just makes sense to continue this for the time being. I mean, the reality is, is, I think, is, and I'm, I'm the ultimate optimist. When it comes to this fall, I think it's going to be a mess this fall into winter. So, um, I think we should just move forward with this.
So I move to approve the order existing the declaration of a local disaster in and for the Town of Ridgeway.
Seconded.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Tessa. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Bramble.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Geiler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Uh, item number 24 is a professional services agreement between the Town of Ridgeway, Colorado, and Bo James Nerlin, BC. Can you say the name of it again, Preston?
Uh, what was that last part, Eric? I'm sorry.
That has you. This is, this is you, I think.
You know what? I'm going to let Bo take this one.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be great. Um, at the end of July or August 1, I will be leaving David Reed's office. David has been a, a great mentor, um, and I've been in his office for 10 years. But ultimately, it's time for me to move on. It's, uh, more of a separation, I guess, than a divorce and, um, somewhat of a mutual parting. I will be joining up with, um, another, uh, law firm where I'll be, where I'll be a partner. And frankly, I would like to continue to represent the town and serve as the town attorney. The professional services agreement that's included in the packet mirrors the existing agreement that is in place with the town, uh, with the exception that it's, um, terminate, it can be terminated at any time versus the 60-day termination that you have currently with David Reed's office. Under the ethical rules for attorneys, uh, clients have the ability to either go with the attorney that has serviced, uh, the client, and I have been the primary attorney since our office was retained as legal counsel in 2016, stay with the firm, uh, or select a new attorney. And that would, I envision, um, look like, uh, putting out an RFP. So, um, that being said, uh, with this being our July meeting and not wanting to have this, uh, going to place in August, uh, post-separation, I'd be asking that, to the extent that the council is so willing, uh, that we enter into the professional services agreement effective August 1, um, and then get, uh, the consent to terminate the professional services agreement with David Reed's office, um, effective August 1.
Well, I for one have been more than pleased with you as our town attorney. At this point, I would be more than happy to have you continue on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was like, every, you know, I was gonna say, you know, every time it's like, well, let's ask Bo. It's like, Bo's gonna be getting it. So, I feel really comfortable with that option for us.
Anybody else?
Yeah, no issues.
Sweet, um.
Anyone like to make a motion?
So I move, we enter into the professional service agreement between the Town of Ridgeway and Bo James Nerlin.
Effective August.
Seconded.
Moved by who seconded that?
Russ.
Russ.
Preston.
You're nicer than me, Tessa.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote, vote, please.
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Bramble.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Geiler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, would you like to vote?
Aye.
So Bo, do we need a separate vote to terminate the agreement with David Reed?
Yeah, if you could just give the authorization to Preston to terminate that agreement and I can work with him directly to get that in place, that would be great.
Does that need to be a vote or just a verbal?
You know, it's probably cleaner if it's a vote. So I'd be looking for a motion to terminate the professional services agreement with, uh, J. David Reed.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Brett. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, vote, please.
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Bramble.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Geiler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Item number 27, strategic.
Eric, I'm, I'm back on here.
Okay, take it over, John. Item number 27.
You're doing a great job, but I don't know what happened. My internet probably cut out.
Welcome back, Bo.
Yeah, so we're on item number 27, which is, uh,
Now we're on 25.
We added something, or no, we.
Added a 26.
Oh, this is the additional policy matter that we were supposed to remember five hours ago.
No, you're, you're on, I, no, you're on item 25, discussion regarding change in employment status of the town manager from probationary to permanent.
Yeah, somebody's interested in that.
I don't have that on the list.
Understanding that, um, Town of Ridgeway has a standard six-month probationary period for new employees. And Preston brought it to my attention when we were reviewing the budget last, it's like the agenda last week, that, uh, this is his six-month anniversary. And I have to say, I am absolutely thrilled and excited to recommend that we remove Preston from probationary status and make him an official permanent employee because he is doing a fabulous job.
Aye.
Aye.
That's a pirate eye.
Move by acclamation.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston, you're doing a great job. Baptism by God. It's been great.
Much appreciated, yeah, it has been great. Love working, working here, it's been fantastic.
Awesome. So I think we did that okay, didn't we, without the roll call vote?
It's getting late, do we have to have a motion for that?
I think we do.
Or a movement. It was a movement.
So there was an item number twenty-six. I'm forgetting what it was, though.
Twenty-six is the amended IGA related distribution of CARES Act funds.
With the new numbers.
Yeah, and so there's a late add in the drop box with the updated arithmetic, so I could give a whole spiel, but Ridgeway's allocation is now eighty thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars. Again, that is not money that Ridgeway just gets to put in our pocketbook. That's, that's money that's earmarked to Ridgeway in the event that, you know, we need to request reimbursement for some unforeseen COVID-nineteen expenditures. And I'll reiterate, our expenditures or costs related to COVID-nineteen have been very extreme, extremely minimal outside of some personnel time, Shane, myself, you know, at the Unified Command level. So I don't anticipate coming anywhere near that eighty thousand dollar mark, but it's nice that it's there. So again, the amended IGA is just to account for the arithmetic error.
Could a patrol car be considered COVID expense?
No.
That was fast.
Yeah.
So I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement related to distribution of CARES Act funds with revised estimates for Ridgeway.
Second.
All right, motion made, seconded, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Care of business.
Counselors' cheek.
Aye.
Bramble.
Aye.
Lakin.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Skyler.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Aye.
Great, passage unanimously. That takes us to written reports with a better-than-average dad joke this week.
I beg to differ.
Any, any other questions for Preston on, on the town manager's report? Anything you wanted to highlight for us, Preston?
You know, Mayor, nothing comes to mind in particular to highlight in that report. I'm happy to go through it. I'm looking at the time, ten thirty-two, so I'd be lying if I said I really wanted to go through it, but I'm happy to do it. And then the one that I would want to call your attention to for sure, well, the other two, the strategic plan progress report, you know, I think it's chock-full of some really good information, happy to go through that. Or if, if you all would like, if you haven't had a chance to go through that progress report, hopefully it, the format works. I couldn't get it actually, I couldn't take the actual document and manipulate it very well, so I had to like create my own Word document. But happy to answer any questions as to where we're at with certain, certain items on the twenty-twenty strategic plan. There's a lot on there, really great strategic plan. And I, I would welcome any comments now or feel welcome to reach out to me at any time, at a standalone time, and we can talk through any of these items or all of them, if you all would like. And then, again, I can go through anything in the town manager's report you all have questions on, but I do want to go to the, that last report, the, the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget preparation schedule. Pam and I put this together last week. It may look a little or maybe a lot different than what you all are used to. I don't want to, talked with Pam about this a lot, I don't want to mess up a good thing if you'll, if, you know, council has a certain vision in mind with regard to how to go about preparing the fiscal year budget, but this is kind of one of my ideas. There's a highlighted section for a formal budget retreat from nine AM to two PM, September twenty-sixth, that is a Saturday. Wanted to call your attention to it now so that you all could say that definitely doesn't work or that works okay enough for me to block out my calendar now. So I thought I'd approach that subject.
Does not work for me at all.
It doesn't, Eric, okay.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Good to know. Well, Eric, why don't we do this? I'll reach out to you offline to see.
Okay.
What, what Saturdays might work in that general timeframe and then circle around with council?
Okay.
Okay.
Every time I hear budget retreat, I think of all of us in your office, all of us trying to have a budget retreat last year, Preston.
That's what Pam was saying. That doesn't sound that clear.
It was cozy, not, I will say.
Just remove the word retreat.
It was not social distancing, that was for sure.
There was candy.
So Preston, we didn't, we didn't spend enough time giving you kudos for all the work you've done, but I want to give you special kudos for all the work you've been doing with Unified Command that you didn't really highlight too much in your report, but I think you've been doing a great job. A lot of work.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you very much. And I, you know, I.
You didn't expect that coming on board, that's for sure.
That's for sure.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, and get that remark a lot, but what are you gonna do? And.
If it was part of the job description. You would have walked away, yeah.
I think about this every day, it's not something specific to Ridgeway or URA County. Everyone's dealing with this across the globe, it's nuts. So anyway, I appreciate that, Terry, and we're getting through this, and it's not getting any better right now, it looks like, but we're gonna have to figure out how to, how to get our compliance rate, our local compliance rate with masks up, and every other community across the nation is gonna have to, to, to figure out a way to do that too.
It's an overused cliche, but it's the new normal that we're all having to deal with, for sure.
It is the new normal, absolutely. So anyway, thanks for, for that remark, and I just want to say a special shout out. I, I'll thank them till the cows come home. Tanner and Glenn have worked so hard this past however many days, hundred-plus days, and we're lucky to have them, we really are. Glenn and Tanner have been working their butts off. And so if you haven't had a chance, I'd encourage you to drop them a line or give them a call and just thank them because it, it can't be understated the work that they've done to get to this point, and the work's not over yet. There's a lot more work to be done.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Preston. It's, it's really important that they get a little pat on the back once in a while because they're not, we're not getting a lot of that from the public, and they are doing their damnedest just in service to their community, which is amazing, so it's.
As an anecdote and feedback to our efforts with the, I forget the name of the joint council, but I was speaking to a bartender at the Full Tilt, stopped, stopped in for lunch the other day after we passed the mask requirement, and he gave us thanks for giving them the back, the backing to deal with that stuff. So, you know, it, it is having a material effect.
Absolutely.
Good to hear.
Okay.
All right, so there, anything else? Anybody have any committee reports?
I have one. I actually did my liaison job with Erin at the fairgrounds, just because I hadn't reached out to her before, and just a quick report on that. There's absolutely nothing going on at the fairgrounds, they've canceled all events, they're pretty much dormant. She did mention that, you know, there had been some historical concerns over the, you know, the differences in the boundaries of the properties as it relates to that corner that we're improving, and I gave her what update I could on the current status of the funding for that larger project and mentioned that we, we're doing the, the minor improvements that were mentioned earlier in the reports today. So she's all good with that, and she now knows who her liaison is, and she'll be in touch when needed.
That's great, I think you'll enjoy working with her, she's great.
Yeah, she's, she's a good lady.
Okay, anybody else?
So I want to amend the, the joke, and we were talking, we've been doing a lot of "I" in pirate talk, so what's a pirate's favorite letter?
I. Was that a books?
No, it's the, it's this, no, it's the C.
Okay.
Okay. On that note?
Yep.
I think this is the record for longest council meeting I've had.
Oh, they're saying nothing.
With that, I'm going.
All right. Hearing no objection, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, have a good day.
Good night.
Take care. Talk to you soon.